Prior to this evening's meeting, we had an executive session to review Mr. Rayner's contract situation. We'll have a discussion on that under new business number five. There were no votes taken in executive session and no motions made. We have the consented agenda with the bills. We have a motion to receive in place on file.
So moved.
Any questions on the bills?
I need to re-boost myself again.
Ms. Pedro.
Um, when will we see, I was looking at the vinagro payments and I don't see any, let's see, I just see transfer station November. It's not going to be in there. When will we see the person that's supposed to be at the transfer station checking? Or is that not going to be under vinagro?
That's included in the, that's included in the contract price which goes into effect this month.
Okay, so this is the month that it'll be in?
This, yeah, it'll be in the next monthly report.
The next payment. Yeah, all right, so it's not in this section. Right.
Ms. Kessin?
I can't do this. Never mind.
You can ask a question. There's no motions and there's no--
Well, the discussion is, is we don't, we don't pay vinagro, we don't see that management cost in these bills. We only pay them for the hauling, right?
We pay--
So I don't, we wouldn't see what you just said.
No, we do.
I thought we only, we only paid them the hauling costs is what we saw.
The hauling is separate, I think. Yeah, the hauling, because that's what mixed C and D is, right, and concrete and ABC, right, that's the hauling, right?
But the, but the vinagro--
And then it says--
Correct. But the employees underneath the management.
--transfer station November.
Right, but that you wouldn't see the individual person broken out.
No, no. But that's why I was asking if the cost--
Yeah, so for instance, in here you see ABC, you see C and D, and then where you see October, November, what you're looking at there is their, their operating costs which they're charging us for the contract.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and one recusal from Mr. Kessin. We have minutes from the town council meeting of January 8th.
Motion approved.
And discussion. Ms. Pedro.
Yes, um, I would like to, under new business one, include President Hamilton's prelude that the town council legislative priorities were not voted on. Mr. Hamilton made it clear that these were individual requests where the school committee did vote on their legislative priorities. I'd like to, if you can go back to the tape and include that prelude that he put in there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or corrections?
Motion to accept the alteration.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes seven zero and then a main motion to approve with the alteration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we have tax vouchers from 2018, 122-01 to 2018, 122-dash--
Motion approved.
Fourteen, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Rayner, town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, council, ladies and gentlemen. First, a quick update on Pay as You Throw program. Waste Zero reports that our bags are shipping this week and they should be in stores by the weekend. Our initial rollout would be in eight stores: Clements Market, the Agway, the two Rite Aid stores, the variety store, the Prudence Variety Store, the Green Grocer, Patriot Petroleum, and Ace Hardware. We are waiting on the Portsmouth Cumberland Farms and the Sebra, S-E-A-B-R-A, store in Bristol for confirmation that they will also carry the bags. They're just waiting for the okay from corporate that they anticipate they'll be onboard with the program. Over 100 people have attended the Pay as You Throw workshops that were held by our solid waste and recycling coordinator, Ray Antea, and this Wednesday we will hold the second of two training sessions for our transfer station guards and personnel. Representatives from Waste Zero and Ray Antea have also appeared on the Portsmouth this week TV program and will appear again next Friday talking about the program. Additionally, the recycling coordinator will be at the transfer station during the first, the first week of the Pay as You Throw program to ensure the smoothest possible transition. Word about the police building construction project. The project, as it stands now, is about 8% complete. All the footings have been poured and the construction of the foundation walls is underway. Our contractor advises that weather delays have impacted the schedule by about two weeks. They have discussed resequencing of activities to mitigate the delay and they have advised us that they plan to ask their subs to increase staffing levels and work multiple areas simultaneously to recover the lost time. Our next milestone date, our, our next milestone is steel delivery. Structural steel delivery is scheduled for the week of 26th February, and the contractor believes this date is still valid and reports they will be ready and the project is still on budget. With regard to coyotes, last Tuesday, our police chief, Tom Lee, coordinated a community outreach meeting with local residents concerned about the island's coyote population. Numi Mitchell from the Conservation Agency and state DEM biologist Charles Brown discussed the coyote issue and how to, how to best control their population and answer questions from those in attendance. Additionally, our animal control officer, Elizabeth Fatoma, spoke about how we as a town track sightings and provided information from those in attendance on when and how to contact police regarding coyote sightings. I'd like to make an announcement regarding Rhode Island Risk Management's Trust award for a program called Work Smart 21. The town, about a year ago, started taking part in the Rhode Island Trust Work Smart 21 program, which is a risk management program developed by the trust to help municipalities address high workers' compensation claims through an ongoing safety awareness program. Our safety committee has worked hand in glove with the trust to establish and meet goals to reduce the frequency and severity of work-related injuries and implement safe work practices. It's my pleasure to report that the trust awarded $500 to the town last week in recognition of the work our committee has done. And then lastly, just an announcement that the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns will hold their 18th annual convention this week. Most department heads plan ongoing and an invitation has been extended to the council for those who can attend. There will be 18 workshops this year covering subjects as diverse as records management, marijuana laws, and ethical issues surrounding municipal contracts. As in previous years, there is no charge for anyone wishing to attend, and it does go for most of the day. That concludes my report for this week, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mr. Kessin? Thank you. The, the two Rite Aid stores are Walgreens as of last Thursday?
Okay, that might be what corporate has held up to decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it used, one of them used to be Nato's. Went to Brooks, Rite Aid. It's now Walgreens.
The other one was Brooks before it was Rite Aid. And it's my understanding that the northern Brooks slash Natos is closing and consolidating.
They're holding on. There's, there's sprinkled Walgreens names inside everywhere.
Thank you for that information and we'll pass it on to Waste Zero.
I too would like to, I would like to thank--
Just so there may be a new contact.
The chief and Liz Numi Mitchell. Deputy Chief Peters is here as well. I attended last week. It was a very informative meeting about the coyotes. For all you folks at home, the main reason you see more coyotes is unfortunately access to food is their main reason. They're coming by your house, through your neighborhoods, because they're finding food easily. So if we can limit the type of foods that they're getting to, apparently they love fruits, so if you have an apple tree or a pear tree in your backyard, they might be scampering through to eat a few of those. But keeping down the amount of access to food, the easy access to food will help control the population. I saw one at midnight on Saturday night, wandering peacefully down the middle of Park Avenue, right down Mill Street. My wife saw one the other morning and she put the window down to take a picture of it and he came over like, "What you got for me?" So that leads me to believe that somebody out in that neighborhood is providing food for him. So if we can help our, we can help ourselves by not making it easy for the coyotes to get food. That is the way they procreate, by the amount of food they have. So the more food they have, the more coyotes you'll see. I also thought of something after the meeting, of course, that one of their main den slash hangout areas is now becoming a neighborhood. So they've probably moved on from there and come further up the east side of the island. So they're here for the long haul. We have to deal with them, they have to deal with us. If we can make it easy, make it harder for them to find food, they'll have less coyotes and they'll move off the island. So that's what I got out of the, the meeting. Well, more, they'll, they'll stay on the island, but more will leave the island. So Numi does a very nice job with that. If you need to track it, she has a whole website and you can find out where all the coyotes are and ask her all kinds of questions. So, thank you, sir. Appointments and resignations. We have the resignation of Mr. Richmire from the Lower Glen Farm Preservation Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And we have the resignation of Mr. Endestrick from the Tax Assessment Board of Review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we have appointments to the Bristol Ferry Town Common Committee. Reappointments of Ms. Elliott, Mrs. Sears, Mr. Smith, and Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Smith?
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Design Review Board, we have a reappointment of Mr. Avery.
Motion approved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Glenn How, Glenn Mannerhouse Authority, we have a reappointment of Mrs. Reposa.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Harbor Commission, we have reappointments of Mr. Gudrow and Mrs. Brown.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We have the entire Tank Farm Development Advisory Committee consisting of Mr. Andros, Ms. Cortvin, Mr. Gump, Mr. Humphries, Mr. Lopes, Mr. Thayer, and Mr. Vikovich.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And the Tax Assessment Board of Review, a reappointment from Mr. Finnegan.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Old Business Number One, we have a request for approval for the replacement of our town signs at the four entrances, Mount Hope Bridge, Scottic River Bridge, and Eastern West Main Road.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Still catching up on that sleep, huh, Brian?
Council president members of the council, I'm here for a request for approval for the replacement of the welcome to Portsmouth signs, like council president said. We have four signs, Route 24, Route 114, Boyd's Lane, and Route 138. Received one proposal from Lip Tech Signs for $16,850. This is under our capital approval of the $18,000 by $1,150.
Any questions on the signs?
Yeah, did we specify the, the signs?
Yes.
Or we're just going to replace what's there?
We specified in the RFP what type of signs we're looking for. Yes.
Are they similar to what's out there, Brian?
They're similar to the ones that were out there already.
There was a discussion on this council at one point that we were going to attach a name to the bottom if they paid for it. Did that fall apart?
I'm trying to work with the Portsmouth Business Association. John, where are you? There he is. He's still working on it, right? Thank you.
And that RFP incorporates that possibility?
I'm sure it could to put below it, but it wasn't part of the RFP that had a message board below it, but--
That's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the awarding to Lip Tech Signs?
A motion to approve Lip Tech Signs as the winner of the bid.
Second. One more question?
Yes, sir.
Is 18-5, this is, is this, this is funded out of the budget?
Correct. This is, it's actually less than what was funded into CIP for this year.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Trash Compactor.
Council president member of the councils, I'm here to request the approval of the new transfer station compactor for the price of $228,509 to Maguire Equipment for being, to remove and install the new compactor. It's like $19,500 less than we anticipated and Maguire Equipment was the only reasonable bidder and to install the previous compactor that he installed the previous compactor at the transfer station already, so he has good, good work relationships with us.
How long does the installation process take, Brian? I can't remember how long the last one took.
It was three days.
Three days? So do they, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
They're thinking, no, they're thinking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. They have it all been written for Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay. Case is a hiccup.
Case is a hiccup. I don't think there will be, but--
So those, that Monday and Tuesday, the recyclables will be outside, then?
Correct.
Okay. And will let people know well enough in advance, put a sign out front?
We will, because they're thinking it's going to be about eight to 12 weeks for them to order the compactor before it's installed, before it's made of notice.
Cool. Any questions?
Question.
Mr. Gleason.
In the past, we used to build, rebuild the hydraulic rams for these pits. Is that still, do we still use those as spare parts?
No, because these are going to be new compactors, so they're different sized ram. Right now, they can't rebuild the ram--
Yeah.
--because it's a specialty ram, especially old compactor. So this is going to be all brand new.
So one pit has been done and this is the second one?
This will be the second one.
And it's the same type of equipment?
It'll be the same type of equipment.
And how are we paying for it? I'm sorry, was it in here?
This was--
Capital.
This was in the capital improvement plan, over five to seven years, I can't remember now.
So this is the bonded?
This would be a municipal lease program.
And paid through by sticker fees in the enterprise--
And paid through the enterprise.
And the sticker fees incorporated at the 140.
That's correct.
Well, combination of stickers in the bags.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I've got to say, you folks are very quiet tonight. It's usually a little bit of a murmur out there, but you're very quiet this evening. Old Business Number Three, discussion and action on the Equinix Island Planning Commission questionnaire. Ms. Pedro or Mr. Gleason? You want to kick it off?
I already answered mine last time.
Okay. Any other counselors care to answer the questions?
Is anybody here from AIPC?
Just Mr. Humphries is one of the board members. Miss Adams, there you are. I did see you coming in.
Okay.
But--
No, you're, you're fine. That's fine. I was just curious whether anybody had come. I guess as a, as a reminder, where we got here, I believe it was in November, we all received in our mailbox a request for a questionnaire. And I was one of a few counselors, a couple of councils, that felt that it should have been addressed to the whole council as a whole, rather than individually just sent in the form of a letter or an interview or whatever. And that's why we're here tonight. I guess Liz and Paul have made their statements. And I really don't have too much to say. It's, I'll tell you what the questions were asked of us. How do you view the Equinix Island Planning Commission as a town council, as a town committee, an independent planning commission, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit hybrid organization, or something else? My response was I had always thought it was a public nonprofit, but now realize it's a private nonprofit, often driven by their primary donors. Second question, how can we best keep communication channels open with town councils? Do the council liaisons provide enough information on AIPC projects or not? What additional information would you like to hear? How often? From whom? My response was, we do not hear from our liaisons on a regular basis. So no, we do not get enough information. We should be hearing quarterly or bi-yearly about Portsmouth-related projects and general updates regarding the current pursuits of AIPC. Does the current board appointment process work satisfactorily? Question three, how can it be improved? Should AIPC recommend candidate board members? Should AIPC approve appointments and or remove board members for cause? Should the AIPC board control appointments, as do other 501(c)(3) nonprofits? My response was, we should not be appointing members to private nonprofits. And I feel strongly that the, the other nonprofit that we deal with on a regular basis is Equinix Land Trust. We do not appoint liaisons to that private nonprofit. And I don't, I don't feel that we should be doing that with AIPC, my own personal opinion. There have been issues with some of our appointees not being able to get reliable information when they were sitting with, on AIPC-related boards. Pardon my response. Question four, what do you think of AIPC, what do you think AIPC brings to our island community? What would you say is AIPC's value proposition? That is, what does AIPC do that adds value to our quality of life? Does AIPC add to coordination and cooperation among the towns leading to better services at lower costs? Should I answer these while we went along here? What would you say is AIPC's value proposition? I'm not sure what it is. Does AIPC add to coordination and cooperation among towns leading to better services at lower costs? Probably not. Does AIPC help our community to meet challenges more effectively than we could implement individually? Probably not. Communal efforts can detract from Portsmouth own efforts. That's the way I feel about that question. Four more questions. Question five, are you aware of AIPC's recent and ongoing projects? Are you aware that from 2004 to 2014, AIPC received grants of over $3.1 million, not including town funding? No, I was not aware of that. Are you aware of some of the past and current AIPC projects? I'm mostly familiar with bike-related projects and the west side planning projects from the past. Question six, how could AIPC be more effective? Do you think cooperative island-wide projects are useful and effective? Maybe. What are some of the projects that AIPC should undertake? During our strategic planning process in 2015, we asked island stakeholders about shared challenges. These included improving water quality, creating robust infrastructure, developing resilience and disaster readiness, responding to social needs such as increased recreational opportunities, services to the elderly, food security, and developing a green economy. I think it was mentioned here that it would be nice if there was some efforts on their part to promote recycling among the three communities. That was my answer. Question seven, where do you think AIPC could have the biggest impact? Are there other areas you think AIPC should focus on? My response is, I'm not really sure. Do you have any other recommendations that would make, that I would make to the AIPC board to help AIPC achieve our mission? What can we do better? My answer is simply better transparency. So, thank you for your indulgence in my response here. I don't know if that was the original intentions of other counselors, but I would rather present my responses. I think it's a, it's a public, should be a public response rather than a private response to a private nonprofit.
Okay. Anybody else care to respond to the questions on the council? Is there anything else that Ms. Pedro or Ms. Kessin you want to discuss that didn't, was not discussed at the previous meeting?
This is only about the questionnaire, Mr. President, so anything would be out of order?
Okay. All right. Hearing nothing else, we can move on. We can receive that and, well, we've discussed it. We can move on to the monthly finance report. Old Business Number Four with Mr. Menke.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the town council. The two things that jump out from the, basically the halfway mark for this year, for the budget is revenues for property tax and motor vehicle property taxes are slightly to, a little bit more than slightly ahead, and that's because of people prepaying their taxes based on the new tax changes that are coming in the, in the following year. Other than that, everything seems to be right on track. As far as expenditures go, there, I addressed the expenditures with finance and HR in a previous meeting. There are a few other departments that are slightly above the 50% mark and in keeping with the town administrators' guidance at our department head meeting tomorrow, those departments will be addressed and I won't say they will be put on record, but we will say, you know, we're going to monitor your expenditures more closely because the event, in the event that it exceeds and there has to be transfer funds, we have to do that with approval of the town council. So we can't just let it continue to spend without any, without any guidance or monitoring. And other than that, pending any questions, that concludes my break.
So there was a rush on the tax window right after Christmas?
No.
Yes, okay, just checking. Anybody have questions on the report?
I have a question that, that I didn't get answered last, last week, because I think there was just a miscommunication between myself and Mr. Rayner. So it's time to ask Mr. Menke. Mr. Menke, we had a revenue shortfall last year because we had a, I would say, a substantial taxpayer that didn't make his payments. Has that been corrected? Do you know?
That's, to date, no, it has not been corrected.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Menke? Have a motion to receive and place on file?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we have Old Business Number Five, discussion and action and approval of a 2018 to 2021 town council, town administrator contract. The contract is currently online and up. It's been out there. The council discussed a modification in the contract, among other things, specifically, Mr. Rayner, and I think you and I touched on this, was removing the increase 2% or increase that could consume a price index, the CPI.
Correct.
We had discussed taking that out.
Correct.
So the council agreed with taking that out as well. For people who are not aware of how the town administrator contracts or, or any of the non-union employees, their increases are based off of the contract's highest increase of the contract going forward. There was some discussion, excuse me, highest increase in the town municipal contract for the municipal employees for that year. We have had discussions inside executive session of looking at writing a new boilerplate contract, for lack of a better term, or agreement for management to further explain that. I don't know. That's basically what we're looking at, right?
Well, I mean, I was against the contract completely. I think this, in its current form, because it allows for us to use the current contract to bargain between individuals. I think we need to get rid of that and get a boilerproof contract. That's the same for all of the, is it NUG?
NUGs.
Oh, it's the NUG management. And we're there, we don't have, this one's got that, I got this, I want this, I want it equalized. And get out of this bargaining unit. These are professional people. And so that discussion went that way. The second thing is, I think this contract discussion should happen after the presentation of the audit. I'm prepared to make a motion to move it below new business two--
Second.
Because it needs to, I mean, the, the audit report is the, in fact, the only document where we get to see how well we, we manage day-to-day operations. And I think after that discussion, we can solidify where we are. I started out and asked Mr. Rayner, I want to be right straight and up front with him. I asked him if he'd take a one-year contract a year ago because of, because of some analysis I did on my own. And this audit report confirms it. So again, my position is that, that I'm not for a three-year contract at this point. And I think that the, the audit-- think that the audit report, is it the final report called for the town for the year of employment? So we have a motion in a second, Mr. President.
Further discussion, questions? So the motion is to move this item down to New Business Number, essentially, New Business Number Three or Two-A?
Two-A or Three. I don't know if we have a Three.
We have a Three.
That's bad. Okay. So it's Two-A?
Two-A.
Or at least after the discussion of the-
That's fine.
-audit report.
All those in favor of moving the contract discussion to New Business? I'm going to call it Two-A, just to make it easier. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
May. Motion passes four to three. That's fine. I'm going to ask the council's indulgence if we could, I noticed there's a couple of young men in the audience and young ladies who are here, and I believe you guys are here to talk about the request for the public hearing for the plastic bag ordinance. Is that correct?
It could be Project Purple.
Yes. No. Okay. Can I ask the council's indulgence to move that up?
Move that up to New Business or-
Unless you guys really want to sit through the Town Council's annual audit. Say, now, okay.
To New Business.
To Old Business Four.
Two, no, New Business One. Just to move New Business Four up to hear it now.
Sure. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Dave, I know you're out there. So everyone is aware, this is a request to hold a public hearing to have final, full discussion on a plastic bag ban here in town. We are not deciding on a plastic bag ban tonight. So we have to advertise it, we don't have to advertise it for three times, just once. We have to advertise it at least once and then hold a public hearing on it, so that would happen at a future meeting.
Great. Thank you, Council President, fellow councilors. With that in mind, I think it's important for people to understand a little timeline about how we got here. We had a great meeting here on August 28th. The council made a six-one vote to move forward with taking some next steps. So I think it's appropriate to give an update on those next steps that were taken, potentially three steps. The first one was to conduct a townwide workshop on plastic bags with the help of the business development team, which is both the combination of the town as well as people from the business in Portsmouth. That meeting occurred on November 9th, right here. November 9th, we had the meeting where we had a townwide workshop on plastic bags. At the same time, we had created a survey for the town of Portsmouth, and we conducted a townwide survey with a clear set of questions. I'm not sure if you've seen the results from the survey, but if you have not, I can provide you a copy this evening. Does anyone need a copy of the results?
Not for this.
Okay.
When we have a discussion on the ordinance, if you could forward that to the clerk and she could put it on the agenda item itself.
Sure. So then afterwards, I worked with the town manager, with the assistance of the town solicitor, and we created a draft ordinance, which is in front of you tonight. So we're requesting your support to move forward with to a public hearing, and I believe you have to advertise it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. McLaughlin?
I have one.
Sir.
I saw an article in the Portsmouth Times, I think, not that I'm trying to give that or Newport Daily News any advertisements. You collected 1,628 pounds of material at Weaver Cove?
On January 13th, we removed about 150 pounds of marine debris.
And was, how much of that was plastic bags and plastic?
Oh, the plastic probably represented about 40% of it, from a volume point of view, from a weight point of view.
It wasn't mostly barge?
No, not at all. We had some derelict fishing gear.
That's everywhere?
Yeah. So with the help of-
We can get rid of the drinking stick, it'd be good.
Yeah. And the following Sunday, we removed 175 pounds of marine debris and litter from Sandy Point.
And do you have that broken down into the categories?
We do. We track by about 45 categories, as well as miscellaneous categories, which are always interesting to record. We certainly can provide that information to you.
Would you provide that in the backup?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions, sir? Ms. McLaughlin? Gentlemen, did you want to come up and say something? Or you just yet? Please come forward. Oh, I'm sorry. Ladies, if you could do me a favor, and if you could do it at the podium, that way the microphone will pick you guys up. And, yeah, spring. Thank you, Mandy. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and this is Evan and Hunter, Jacob and Jack. We are some of the students in sixth grade at St. Michael's Country Day School. In science, we have been studying our oceans, and we learned how much plastic is in it. We decided to try to ban the bag. Here are some of the facts about plastic in our ocean.
Hi, I'm Hunter, and I'm also in the sixth grade, and I'm also in the study of banning the plastic bag, and I've brought together some facts to share for you. So, over 1 million seabirds are killed annually by these plastic bags, and there is enough plastic in our oceans to orbit the Earth four times.
Hello, and I'm Evan, and I'm also a sixth grader from St. Michael's Country Day School, and I'm studying the plastic bag. And 8.8 million plastic bags are spread across the oceans annually, and that 5 trillion pieces of plastic is actually in the oceans right now, as we're speaking. And in 1977, they decided to put the plastic bags in supermarkets, and every single plastic bag that they sold is now, is still in the environment.
My name is Mimi Corellis, and I am a sixth-grade teacher at St. Michael's Country Day School. And the students have made infographics, and they've been researching the study of plastics in the ocean. And after all their research, they really wanted to do something about it, so they have attended the Newport, Middletown, and now Portsmouth to help ban the plastic bag.
Great. Kids, thank you very much. Very nicely done. Good job.
Good evening, council and neighbors. My name is Chris Reeves. I am not a student at St. Michael's Country Day.
You're not a sixth grader either, huh?
I don't, no. That was a while ago. I do serve on the Towns Conservation Commission, and we had our meeting just a few days ago to talk about this and whether or not we should move forward, and we all collectively agreed that we should, in fact. I've been studying plastic pollution for about over a decade, maybe 11 years or so. So we had a fairly informed discussion on it and have decided to ask that we do go forward with advertising this and taking a vote.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniella Abbott, and I'm actually here representing a friend of mine who is home with her 10-month-old and couldn't join us this evening. But Dr. Sharp is actually a professor of marine biology at Roger Williams University, and she sent me a brief statement to voice her opinion in support of you holding a public hearing on this. We hear a lot about plastic pollution in oceans, and what the students at St. Michael's are studying is what's called macroplastics pollution, which is the stuff that we pick up from the beaches, the plastic bags, and the pieces of plastic and all the big stuff. But in reality, the plastic never really decomposes, it just breaks down into teeny-tiny little pieces and ends up in our oceans and in our water. It breaks down in our landfills and then runs down into the water. So it's in the water, it's in the sediment, it's in the oysters, it's in the fish, it's in the big fish, it's in the small fish, and it's in everything we eat. And she is a professor at Roger Williams University, and this is what her profession is, studying this. And she says Narragansett Bay in particular has a very, very high concentration of microplastics. And the best thing that we can do to help alleviate this issue is to eliminate single-use plastics, like plastic bags. And so we ask your support in taking this next step towards banning the plastic bag.
Thank you.
Ms. Kessner?
It breaks down in the water and ends up from the landfills into the bay, then why are we doing pay-as-you throw?
Yeah.
I'm having, I'm struggling with that.
That's a good question that I'm not in support of, but-
No, I wasn't in support of it either, but that is the biggest single-use, single-use bag we're going to find.
And we're double-bagging trash.
You know what I mean? So if this is the wrong solution, how did we get to pay-as-you throw in a plan?
I think that's a separate debate, though.
Yeah, but it's starting tomorrow. It should have been part of it.
If we could ban shopping plastic bags, that would be a great step.
Correction. Starts February 1st.
Yeah.
For the record.
Thank you so much.
But thank you for the information.
Mr. Roberts?
Peter Roberts, Eighty-Yarmouth Avenue. I would like to ask one other thing when he turns in the report, if he could put in it, how many of the bags they have picked up on the beaches are from Portsmouth businesses? Okay? And another thing I think nobody's looking at here, for years, large cities and everything else have dumped their garbage in the ocean, and that's where all this is coming from, not what we do, what was done and still going on. It's not ours. We're not responsible for it. And no bags that I've ever taken to my house ended up on a beach. None. And I don't want to be penalized for it, because I do use those bags to put my garbage in at the house. And I think this is completely wrong. It's really wrong, because most of the problem is what people have done with so many tons of garbage put in the ocean, and that's where it's coming from. And I really would like to know, how many of these bags are from Portsmouth? Because I don't think you're going to find them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Anybody else?
It would be very interesting to find out whether or not any of these bags that we're cleaning up on the beaches are coming from Portsmouth, but that is not what the research shows when people looked at the source points for where bags are coming from and where plastic is coming from. It's not stuff that was dumped in the ocean that's then bubbling back up to the surface for continuing to produce an astronomical amount, an exponential amount of plastic that isn't being recovered into our landfills.
And all these are discussions for when we have the public hearing, not to, whether or not we're going to have a public hearing. Go ahead.
Hi. I don't typically, although my children have been at the Newports and the Middletown, I don't typically speak, I allow them to speak. But I think it's interesting that, my name is Allegra Brosco, I live in Portsmouth, 993 Middle Road. Portsmouth is a particularly interesting community, and I think it's really important for this conversation to happen. No, we're not entirely responsible for the plastic that's in the ocean, but every little step is important. And the macroplastics are one piece. The microplastics are entirely different, right?
I get that, right? That's what's breaking down and into the water.
Right, and that's what ends up in the birds and the fish, and eventually in your body and so forth and so on. But I think that the need to have a discussion is important, and I think that although it's not our problem, it's an important step for all of us to talk about and take a step and find out what we can do to begin to stop the continued use. So that's all I'd like to say. I don't really, if that's okay with you, I'd like to just stop there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
One more?
One more?
All right.
David Reeves, 66, Freeborn. I just like to say, I do a lot of walks around town, I go to a lot of beaches, Tiverton Island and all that. You don't see anything on the land, everything's in the water, and it's all plastic, but it's not bags. That's not really what's there, for the most part.
It's bottles.
No, it's water bottles. The biggest thing are water bottles, and the other thing is Dunkin' Donuts cups and styrofoam food containers, and that all breaks down with the other stuff. But as far as bags, they're not hanging around in the trees. I've got a large expense of land near places that sell the bags, have doses of bags, nothing. And they're not really single-use. I mean, I don't know how many you people, I use them for a number of things, selling vegetables and stuff like that on my hands. And whereas garbage bags, one-shot deal. Water bottles, one-shot.
The west end of Headley Street has an awful lot of bags from the Compaq station to the Cavallo Farm.
That's going to be a control problem.
Today.
But anyway, and the other thing is, with this ordinance, if you read all the exceptions, what are you really stopping? I mean, you've got dry cleaning bags, I mean, you've got your newspaper bags, you've got all these other bags that people get exempted. So you're just picking one particular type of plastic.
And we're adding a new one, David.
Yeah, well, that's my, I was going to go there too, and say this is hypocritical too, because I never put plastic bags into the landfill. I use them and I take them back to Clements, and they go back in there. And now I'm forced to buy bags to put my trash in. So for the first time, I'm going to be putting them in the mainstream. So, but I was going to say, it really isn't the bags, it's other plastic and drink cups and things like that.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Laura Reaper. I live in Portsmouth, and I live off of Middle Road. Take a walk down Middle Road. Middle Road is strewn with plastic bags. Sometimes I use the plastic bag to then pick up the glass bottles and the paper and all the other things that are there, so they are there. But you just have to go down Middle Road, where people use that road to go down to Headley, and you'll be behind a pickup truck. And he doesn't cover his waste bin, and he doesn't cover his recycling bin, and you see all the bags flying out. So you just have to go to certain places to find this. But just, you can also reuse paper bags as your trash bags. Thank you.
The motion, is there a motion you have to have?
Motion to approve, date certain.
Second.
This would be better off sooner rather than later, so we don't do it into the budget season?
It'll be the first meeting in February.
I wouldn't do it that quick. Second meeting in February?
How long do we need to average?
At least a week, a week and a half. So, second week, second meeting in February.
February 25th, is it, Mr. President?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Does that work for the council?
February 26th works for me, and that's in the motion.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. So February 26th, 7 o'clock-ish, we got the regular business stuff to get through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Want to give them a minute to leave?
I did my walk yesterday, you know what I found? Fireball dishes.
Yeah.
Buck a shot. Awesome. Let's buck a shot. Number one is fireball, number two is Finlandia vodka. I don't know why, that's-
They use the kilt. I hate that they use the kilt.
Next up, we have New Business Number One, which is not New Business, it's continual business for this town. This is our fourth year, I believe, doing a Project Purple proclamation and Project Purple Week. Project Purple, an initiative by the Heron Project, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation established by former NBA basketball player Chris Heron, assists individuals and families struggling with addiction. Project Purple was launched to break the stigma of addiction, bring awareness to dangers of substance abuse, and shed light on effective practices. And whereas the Project Purple concept was developed when Chris spoke at a local high school in 2011 in front of students wearing purple shirts, after sharing his story, a young woman raised her hand and stood up to speak. After snickering and laughter was heard, the student said, "Thank you, Mr. Heron, for validating what we do. We are the sober students at this high school, and each year we take a pledge not to use drugs or alcohol." Mr. Heron was surprised by the courage it took not only to stand up and to share the symbolism of the purple shirts, but he was inspired to make a difference among the adolescents across the United States. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Keith Hamilton, President of the Portsmouth Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of January 22nd through the 26th, 2018, as Project Purple Week here in Portsmouth. And I urge all citizens to celebrate and support the special events planned by both the Portsmouth schools and other community organizations, Portsmouth businesses, along with the Portsmouth Fire Police Departments displaying Project Purple banners, and the Fire Department has purple lights up tonight. And if you haven't seen it, there's purple ribbons scattered throughout, around town. I know I saw them on, Senior Center has them. Project Purple and the Heron Project, Chris's organization, not only is just the Project Purple, but the Heron Wellness and Heron Project are doing great things to help people, not just in our community, but throughout the country, to try and get people off of drugs and alcohol addiction. And it's, especially in this day and age with opioids, and now we have marijuana in gummy bear form, we have fentanyl in marijuana, it's getting worse and worse. Ray, did you want to come up and say a couple words? Ray Davies, our Prevention Coalition leader?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think people sometimes don't really understand how important those little purple bows, the purple lights are. I mean, they look nice. They, they look nice, but what they really say is the thing that counts. You know, and if you've ever had the opportunity, the unfortunate opportunity to have to listen to some of the stories that some of the mothers have told who have lost children to substance abuse, primarily the opiate situation that's going on in the country and in this town, and in every town in this country. Addictions start someplace. They start someplace. And our job as prevention specialists, and our jobs as adults, I think too, are to try and help give young people especially, all the information we can and all the help we can to make good choices. And you've heard me come before you and give you scientific survey information that we've gathered here in Portsmouth, as all prevention coalitions do in Rhode Island, and I presented facts and numbers to you. And those things sometimes get lost, it gets lost sometimes in the numbers. Our job is to try and give young people and their parents information so they can make good choices. And most kids in the town of Portsmouth do not use drugs and alcohol. They do not use that. And it's a scientific fact that the later a child begins to experiment with any type of drug or substance, the greater the propensity is that they will not develop serious addiction problems down the road. The opposite of that is also very true. The earlier they begin experimentation and fooling around with those substances, the greater the propensity that there are going to be serious problems. So the purple bows are a tribute from adults to kids to let them know that, we know most of the kids in Portsmouth make good choices, and some make bad choices, but yet find ways to make better choices too. Those purple ribbons say, you know what, as adults, we are proud of you for making good choices. And that's what, that's what they are. And I hope that, you know, other towns in, follow our suit. I'm, I'm very proud of Portsmouth. We, you've been behind us since we started doing this. And I've got a list of all the things here, and I won't, I won't read them all because I know you have other matters to get to. It is on the PortsmouthPreventionCoalition.org. PortsmouthPrevention.org is our website. You can go there, and there's a listing of it, and also our Facebook page. But I want to let you know that some of the things that we've done, we started Saturday, we being the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition down at Clements, where we set up a table and we give things away to families, purple lights, bows, anything to, you know, put on their mailbox or something to show their support of it, and take donations. Those donations are going to be augmented. Clements has a, when you leave Clements, you can see there's like a maze thing where you can put your spare change in it. Clements is donating all the spare change they collect during the month of January to the Portsmouth Prevention Coalition. It's going to be matched by the Portsmouth Business Association and given to the Coalition, which we are going to turn around and donate it to the Portsmouth Police Department. So the Portsmouth Police Department has some money to buy the Narcan that they're required to carry in those police cars. And the Narcan is what is used to save people's lives. The Portsmouth Police Department has no budget for that, there's no state monies that come to the Police Department for that. And we in the Coalition want to be able to do something like that, just a small thing, it's a token, but we want to do something to help support that. We're going from that to, all the schools in Portsmouth are participating in various ways, from the elementary kids to the high school, to the middle school. We've got 26 businesses in Portsmouth that are contributing to the Coalition and giving away bows to their customers in support of it. And as you mentioned, the purple lights, the bows that the Fire and Police Department and the first student buses have on them, all those things, again, just, is for people to make a statement that we support kids making good decisions. And I want to thank the Town Council for doing that, and I'd like to remind you, that, painfully remind you, that Thursday night is the Fourth Annual Dodgeball Tournament. I know ESPN has been calling us constantly trying to get television rights to cover it, and my only thing is...
Change the Thursday to the basketball game.
Thursday's the Dodgeball game, right? So my condolences to you.
Our, our Town Finance Director's a former baseball player, so we're gonna make him play on Thursday night. He doesn't know that yet, though, so don't tell him.
So again, in, in addition to all the, the town participation, the business participations, I also want to thank several of the faith communities around the area for, for also participating in this. St. Barnabas does a great job, but a lot of the other faith communities have addressed it from the pulpit, and we appreciate all the attention being given to it this week, and I hope it does make a difference.
It's making a difference. And even if it's in one child or one young man, young woman, it's a difference. Chief, I'm gonna put you on the spot. How many doses of Narcan did we dose out last year?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we were given it more than we ever have in life ever.
And that's, it's unfortunate, and it's, and it's not necessarily transient people passing through Portsmouth, it's our own Portsmouth citizens. So today, it, it's more important now than ever to make sure that we're helping all of our neighbors and our friends to make sure that they're staying off of drugs and alcohol, getting them back off the ledge, because it only takes one dose now with that, the dose of fentanyl that's inside of heroin nowadays, it only takes once. So. Who are, who are our victims? I mean, volunteers for Thursday night? Come on, Kevin. Liz, you gonna try it again?
Do you need...
Well...
What's, what's our schedule?
Rich is on our team, right?
We, we can still negotiate.
It's, it's early this year, I think, I think we're starting at 5:00 or 5:30.
What time's that?
I think it's 5:00 or 5:30. Hang on, I got an email here from Kelly.
Is that 6? School, school chair is saying 6.
Okay.
Excuse me, I think the, the registration for your team is 5:30, and the game can begin at 6.
How many do you need per team?
Five or six, is it? Six? Five, five per team?
Six doesn't matter.
When, when, when one of our shoulders goes out, it is, the 25th, it's 6 o'clock. So, we will, we will be taking volunteers. The school committee has a team as well, right? So it, it doesn't take us long to play, because usually they throw us up against the police or the, of the baseball team, so we're out pretty quick. So if you want to see us play, come early.
Fire Department will be there with oxygen.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Ray, keep up the good work. And thank you. New business number two, presentation of the fiscal year 17 audit from, is it Hague, Sahady and Company? Did I say that right? Is it Hague?
It is.
Okay.
Good evening, Council and members of the administration. We're here this evening from the firm of Hague, Sahady and Company, and we have performed your outside audit, or your independent audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. My name is Mary Sahady. I'm a senior partner with the firm of Hague, Sahady and Company. I've been with the firm for close to 40 years, and I have with me this evening Kyle Connors, he's a partner with the firm as well, and he is the individual who is responsible for the fieldwork and the team that performed your audit here in the town of Portsmouth. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle, and he will do the presentation of the financial statements, and then we are both going to be available to answer whatever questions you may have with regard to this year's outcome.
Hello, everybody. Is this microphone at a good height?
Yeah.
A little tall, so...
It's probably as high as it's gonna go.
So yes, as Mary said, we performed the 2017 fiscal year ending audit, as well as the single audit, and I'll report both of those to you tonight. We had a really great year. This is our first year working with the town. It was a very smooth process, working with, with Rich and John and Fung on the town side, and working with, closely with Chris and everyone on the school side. It was a really smooth audit this year, so that was great. I'm gonna walk you through the financial statements. If you have questions along the way and you want to ask them, that's fine. If you want to wait till the end to ask them, that's fine too. I have a feeling there will probably be a couple. So we will start, start on page 11 of the financial statements, and page 11 is our audit report, which is realistically what we are solely responsible for. We did assist in putting the financial statements together, but this, the report is what we are responsible for. If you were to read through the report, you would read that we have issued you a clean audit opinion. That means we didn't note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as it relates to the financial statements or any of the adjustments that we need to make throughout the audit. We really had a very limited amount of proposed entries for the town and for the school, too. Hopefully what that means is the information you're getting during your monthly or weekly meetings is, is accurate from John and from Chris. A very limited amount of adjustments, which is great, and compared to a lot of other municipalities, that's not always normal. The actual financial statements start on pages 26 and 27. These are your government-wide financial statements, which differ significantly from your governmental that we'll look at shortly. Basically, on the government-wide, what you're doing is picking up all of your long-term assets and all of your long-term liabilities. And there's a few liabilities that I, I want to bring to your attention. The first, on page 27, is the net other post-employment benefit liability, and this sits currently at 24 point, almost $24.7 million worth of liability. Gatsby 75 is what puts this liability on your books. If you were to compare last year's financial statements to this year's financial statements, you'd see that last year they showed an other post-employment obligation of 5.4 million, whereas this year you're showing the full liability of 24, oh, excuse me, yeah, 24.7. So the obligation is basically what you would have needed to pay to start catching up on your, on payments that haven't occurred in the past. So Gatsby 75 takes that obligation, takes it off the books, puts the full liability on the books. Basically what would happen is if everyone who was eligible for those, those benefits were to retire at the same time and everyone left, you have to pay that out. Is that realistically ever gonna happen? It's not. But we still have to show the full 20, 24.7 million. To give you a little bit more information about that liability, 20.75 million of that relates to the town, and the town is funded at 5.1% currently. 5.1 is low, but most municipalities that we work with are pay-as-you-go, so very limited amount of plans are funded even over 10%. I don't, I don't know that we have any. We work with about nine municipalities. So the OPEP fund, it, it's funded at 5%. I know that you're working towards increasing that. The school portion of that liability is about 3.9 million. They're 0% funded as of June 30, 2017, so just something to bring to your attention.
I thought you guys had started the OPEP trust fund?
For 300,000.
So that's it, so that's... Well, it's not zero, so it's 0.001. Okay. Okay.
0.001. The second liability I want to bring to your attention is the net pension liability right below that, and that's pretty sizable, too, at 71.6 million. That consists of two plans. There is a municipal teachers' plan that represents $31.8 million of that liability. Basically what happens is, at the end of the year, the state tells us this is what Portsmouth's liability is. If you wanted to pay that down, that 31.8 million, say you wanted to have it a little more like 20 million, they're not gonna give you that opportunity. They tell you what your liability is, and you're essentially stuck with it. So you don't have much control over how much that plan is funded. But you do have control over your private plan. Private plan represents about $39.8 million worth of that liability. And a year ago, so as of June 30, 16, it was funded at 52.5%. At June 30, 2017, it's funded at 57.05%. So a good 4.5% jump over the prior year. Part of that is you're meeting your actuarially required contribution, which you met this year, and part of it is just that the economy, it was a very good year in 2017 for your investments, but a 4.5% jump is relatively sizable.
But based on our, based on our asset, or our return on investment that we set, expected return on investment, we came up, is it $5 million short of, of what we thought the, the difference between the 6.75 and the 5.9, I think that the, or 5.8 that the plan made? It was a shortfall in revenue in the investment side?
Let me make sure that's accurate for you.
Is that the way I read it? Maybe I'm reading that wrong?
So on page 40, there was investment income on your town pension plan of about 5.7 million, and I believe that represents about a 12% return in fiscal year 7.
Yeah, and everybody else in the world got 26, and I, and I get ours is a little bit conservatively invested, so.
But still 12% does exceed the 6.75 that you would have set for the year.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I read that wrong.
A couple of interesting things to bring to your attention with regard to your, your private plan is that you're using a discount rate of 6.75%, which is a little bit more conservative than what the state has. The state is using 7.5%. That's what the council elected to use. And, you know, three-quarters of a point doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it, but it really is. When we get to the notes section of financial statements, I'll show you what 1% difference can mean on your rate of return in what your liability is. So a lower rate, you're expecting your assets to perform at a lower, lower percentage, your liability ends up being a lot higher. The second...
But even though it's a lot higher, it's more realistic.
Correct. Yep. 7.5 is relatively high.
The, the council made a decision, it's been, six years? Five years?
Yep, five years.
Five years? So go down to that 6.75. Some want to go to four.
I think we wanted to go to six and a half.
But it, it reflects a much more realistic number, and it keeps us focused on that.
Yep, absolutely. There's another significant assumption that goes into your pension liability, and those are the mortality tables that you're using. It's great that people are living longer. Everyone wants that. Unfortunately, it, it doesn't look good on your balance sheet because your liability ends up being a lot higher. And what we're, what we're noticing is that the state is still using mortality tables dated back to the year 2000. In communities, when we see a jump in mortality tables, we're seeing a huge impact on the net pension liability. Portsmouth is using tables from 2014. So significantly more modern, more realistic liability. I wouldn't foresee there being a huge spike in your liability if you changed that from 14 to 16, or 14 to 17. But at some point, the state is gonna have to change their assumptions, and their liability will reflect that significantly.
They won't do that.
They may not.
They won't.
So.
They're in a big enough hole now, they're not gonna make it look bigger.
No, we have a pension trust, correct?
Correct.
So, to the council, because I'm on the pension committee, along with the President, we should probably look at, see if we can get that same group of people to manage this trust. It's not a lot of money, but at least look at it and see what's available when we have our pension meetings, if it's amenable, rather than setting up another committee.
So those are your government-wide statements, and basically when a bond rating agency comes in here, they'll look at your government-wide, but they're not gonna really focus on your government-wide as much as this, they're gonna focus on your governmental financial statements. Your governmental funds financial statements start on page 30 and 31. So on page 30, if you were to look at the, at the bottom, you're gonna see that there is total fund balance for the town of 21.638 million. That's not to say there's 21... That's not to say there's $21.6 million of cash hanging out in the bank that is not being used. So what we provide to you in your financial statements, and it's located on page 73. I apologize. Yep, no, yep, 73, sorry. On page 73, you're going to see that we really try to break out what the intended purpose of those funds are. So you're going to see only about $5.6 million is truly unassigned fund balance. The rest is restricted for capital projects or restricted for public safety. So I'd just like to point out to the council that a lot of times citizens may see that $21 million and think, why are taxes going up? Well, you know, you do have intended use for the majority of those funds.
Could you help me with one number on this page?
Absolutely.
On page 73, maybe a capital fund project with a negative balance?
Correct. Yep. I believe that is on the town's side. I think it's the warrant funds that make up the majority of that.
Okay.
Anytime a fund is in a deficit, we're required to, by Gatsby 54, to show it as a negative unassigned.
Did that get, did that number get shown? Because I noticed you broke out a bunch of other ones. Was this fund also listed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I could probably find the page for you.
No, it's fine. I have questions on the other funds, so we'll take those questions then.
Okay. No problem. Page 31 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, basically your income statement for your governmental funds. This first column here shows your general fund. The town of Portsmouth chooses to show the town general fund and the school unrestricted fund together that make up that one column. So it's actually on page 129 and 130 where we see a breakout of the two different general So on page 130, you're going to see that the general fund, which is the town's general fund, ran a surplus of 301,000 and that the school unrestricted fund ran a surplus of Certainly, I know one of the key topics that you're looking for is related to the $600,000 issuance of debt in the general fund. So just wanted to point that out to you on page 130. You can see that $600,000 is going into the general fund. I'm sure there will be questions on that at some point, but for now, I figured I would show that to you. The reason for the surplus, so to speak, for both the general fund and the school unrestricted fund can be found on their budget and actual. And the budget and actual starts on page 110. So if we're looking at the budget and actual, the first thing that is going to jump out to you is that the revenues for the property taxes were lower than expected by about $367,000. That's about, it's less than 1%, about .74% of the total budget for property taxes. But you can certainly see that the revenue came in under what was anticipated. A few line.
No, I'm sorry. I just cleared my throat.
Oh, it's okay. A few lines below that, the school housing aid came in significantly higher than expected. We saw that across the board with all the municipalities that we work with, that 172,000. It's really difficult to budget for that number because the state doesn't tell you what they're going to give you until after your budget is determined, so.
Or when they're going to give it to us.
That also, correct. So it just happened to be $172,000 higher than anticipated, which worked to your benefit. The fees and licenses were also considerably over budget by about 126,000, and that was due to higher-than-anticipated real estate transfers and recording fees. The line below that, which is your lease and rentals line, it had, it came in unfavorably compared to the budget by almost $200,000. This is for a few reasons. There was certainly a shortage on rentals, shortage on the equestrian, the ASCA, Melville Campground. And there was also built-in transfers into the budget from the cemetery and Sherman Funds, and those transfers did not occur in fiscal '17. So that's why the revenue is lower than anticipated.
Say that again?
Sure.
About the funds?
The cemetery and Sherman. The cemetery and Sherman funds?
Yep.
There was built into the budget anticipated transfers from the cemetery fund and from the Sherman Fund, and those transfers did not occur in fiscal '17.
If you remember, of course, this was quite a while ago. This is when Jim Lathrop had proposed that he would transfer those into the general fund, and then it was discovered that you can't transfer those. It was restricted and can only be used for that purpose, but it was never rectified.
Below that, on the expenditures side, the finance line was over budget by about 233,000. That's finance and HR. And basically, what happened is there was, I believe, eight employees who left during fiscal '17 that were required severance packages for their compensated absence time. If, that would be their accrued sick and their accrued vacation. If you were to look at your compensated absence liability on your government-wide financial statements and compare it to last year, you're going to see that it actually went down by about 250 grand. And I think that's on page 70, but we'll point that out to you when we get there. So you can see the direct correlation for your accrued liability going down and your finance expenses going over budget. There's also combined in that line, OPEB retiree healthcare costs were over budget as well. The $190,000 favorable variance in the legal line, from my discussions with the town, there was $200,000 built into that budget for an expenditure that was posted to the financial statements in the prior year. So that $200,000 is a favorable variance in fiscal year '17 because the expenditure was already recorded. The $116,000 of police, compared to a $5.5 million budget, isn't necessarily a huge amount, but there were candidates who were put through the police academy and did not end up staying with the police department, and that made up the majority of that deficit of the training costs. A little further down, the $115,000 civic support unfavorable variance, you've likely seen that every year. Basically, what happens is that there is no budget for library expenditures, and the town acts as a pass-through. So in fiscal '17, $116.9,000 were passed through to the library fund, which basically represents the entire variance. So there's no budget for that, but the expense does occur each year.
Hang on a quick second on that.
Yep.
Mr. Menke or Kyle, why are we, why are we accounting for that as a revenue coming in and a revenue going out, even though it's a pass-through?
I think it's just consistently been the way it's done. I don't have an answer for you, other than it did happen.
But if you've got money coming in on our left hand and it's going right back out on the right hand, it should be at zero. So if we're not accounting for, we're only accounting for the expenditure but not the revenue. So that's something we need to look at.
On page 111, you're going to see there was a revenue item that was not budgeted for, and that was the issuance of debt related to settlement for $600,000. So that was favorable revenue. And that basically wraps up the general fund budget actual. I don't know if you have questions or if you want me to move on to the schools for you. I'd be happy to do that. That's located on page 112. Does anybody have questions on the town general fund?
I do.
Mr. Kessner?
We can go through the whole thing. I think what happens is, I guess, I want to thank you for sending out the two separate reports, the draft and then the second, the second one with the corrections in it.
Correct.
And I had to tell you, doing that, I had to look through an awful lot of pages. But I guess, I guess I just wanted to keep going on with the schools because the questions that I have are probably not to you. It's to Mr. Rayner.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, the school budget actual is located on page 112.
Well, before we move on to the schools, I have a question, too. So the other copy that we got the previous week was a draft?
There was, I had an opportunity to meet with the finance team. We had submitted a report to the state. We made changes to the structure of that report in order to properly reflect what actually happened in fiscal '17. So the bottom line, none of your bottom lines changed. There was no extra money in the general fund or anything like that. It was a manner of structure in order to make it more clear to the reader of the financial statements what happened.
All right. I spoke with you on the phone last week, and I asked you about the previous report, and you said it was a draft.
Well, basically, we.
You said that you did not send that report to the state. You said you sent the bound copy.
I must have misspoke. I thought you were referring to, did I provide financial statements to the town?
Yeah, yeah. And you said you provided 20 financial statements to the town, one of which you sent up to the state.
Correct.
Yeah. So the one from the week before, you did not send that one up to the state.
It did go to the state.
So you sent two copies to the state?
Correct. An original version and an amended revised version.
All right.
And the state was perfectly fine with that.
Okay.
As it didn't have any structure changes.
So, well, it was confusing to me and probably others because the first copy didn't have draft written on it.
Okay.
So when we poured through the first copy, we didn't realize that we were going to have to pour through a second copy.
I understand.
You know, so that was confusing, and there are several pages that are different.
Correct. But none of the numbers are different.
Not the bottom-line numbers, but what's in between is, yes.
But the structure was altered.
Yes.
Correct. Yep. But the state is fine with what had happened, and the amended report is the only report that they have on their files at this point.
All right.
So all the manemsha that happened in almost the first, I don't know, 40 pages? And I might be exaggerating because I don't have, it's every page. Like on page 19, the net investment capital comprised of 12,000, 12,684,02 versus on page 19 of the revision, which it was very poorly, you know, I would rather have seen a sheet from you telling me what the data is because on 19, the net investment asset comprised of 13,055,458, and the previous copy had it at 12,684,02. So I'm.
I'd be happy to, you know, I can't do it off memory right now, but I'd be happy to meet with you and go through any changes that were made.
If you could summarize the changes that were made in a document.
Yep.
And then get it to the council.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
And then we can put it on.
I think a lot of us are, well, I'm for one, already know the changes that were made.
Well, I've gone through them and marked them.
I would like to have had those before. I would like to have known that that first one was a draft copy. I didn't know that.
Okay.
That's not your, that's actually not you, though. Mr. Rayner actually told us that.
So I guess we're good to go on to the schools at the moment.
Great. So page 112 is the school's budget and actual. And as you're going to see here, the impact aid came in at $141,000 more than anticipated on the school side. Impact aid, just like with your state housing aid, it's next to impossible to budget for. You never really know how much impact aid the school is going to get, so they ended up receiving more than they anticipated. And I think they tried to budget rather conservatively to make sure that they don't, they don't end up with a shortfall. There was savings basically across the board on the expenditure side. Salaries and employee benefits are generally linked to each other, so if you're underspending salary, you're probably also underspending employee benefits. And I think if you had significant questions on why that was, I think, you know, asking the school, Chris, and the superintendent may be a good option, viable option for you. The $638,000 worth of transfers, out of that 638,000, 634,000 was transferred to the school capital projects funds, which is something they do each year per their ordinance if they have a surplus. So essentially, that's what led to the surplus for the town general fund and the school So if we go back to page 31, we got into the general fund and those two, those two funds, but there's also other funds. The town capital project fund had a surplus in the current year of 7.9 million, just short of 7.9 million. And the majority of that is related to the issuance of debt that was made in fiscal year '17 in order to, in order to pay for capital projects. So 12.1 million dollars' worth of debt issuance costs were, excuse me, debt issuance revenue came in, and, you know, those projects are still being completed, so they weren't fully completed in fiscal year '17, which is why you're seeing a pretty sizable surplus in the current year. But I know that the town has every intention to spend that, spend that money down for restricted purposes.
So help me how this links at a $12 million positive in this page, in the capital projects that we just talked about, and I questioned you on, it was added a minus number. How come I don't have the same value?
So this is one town capital project fund.
You have multiples?
Yes, there's probably about 12. This is the one major fund, and anytime that a fund qualifies as a major fund, we're required to present it separately on the face of the financial statements. So if you were to look into the back here, I could probably point you right in the direction of.
So on this sheet, you don't show all the capital?
That's just one capital fund.
That's just one?
Correct.
You don't show all of them?
No, we don't. We wouldn't group them together if one of them was major.
So on page 132, it says town capital projects. That has a balance of $12 million, but the fund itself balanced, the balance here shows a negative balance. And the difference is that one says capital, the town capital project, and the other one says town capital project fund?
Correct. Yep.
That's the only difference. It's not like 1, 2, 3, 4, 12?
Oh, I, there's actually detail in the back, too, that has every single fund in it.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that would be located on?
67? No, maybe not.
153 and 150.
153.
Actually, starting on page 150, starting on page 151. So the funds that make up the capital projects funds.
Oh, yeah.
Are these what looks like 12 or so.
These are mostly the old warrant items, and whether or not there's a positive or negative leftover from the warrants that we took out.
Correct.
Well, that's leftover from '06 to, so that's warrants 1213. So that major negative number is the $916,000 that wasn't accounted for properly from the 1213s.
Correct.
So that should, so that should, should correspond with page 66? Because trying to figure out.
Yes, yep. That's what I would have pointed out to you earlier. Those represents all the funds that are in deficit as of June 30, 2017.
And why would that be?
They were underfunded.
It wasn't up there.
Why would the wind turbine generator account be in deficit when we paid off the wind turbine with the money that the person gave us that has it now?
I don't think that's a question for me.
No, it isn't.
Some of these questions, I, but, but we have to get a feel for what's going on.
No, I certainly understand.
The bottom line is they didn't pay off 100% that there was still a portion that the town had to pay off.
And didn't.
That we are over time.
Can I direct you to page 36 real quick?
Sure.
Page 36 is your enterprise fund.
Yep.
Income statement.
Yep.
So it started with a beginning deficit balance of 701,000. There was a $250,000 transfer to that fund that occurred in fiscal '17 and that's how you're getting from 701 down to 387.
So there's still a, a negative balance there?
Correct. I am, yep. If you're good, I'd be happy to move on.
Go ahead.
Great. So on pages, now that we're, I was actually going to go right there, page 36, this is your, your enterprise funds. You're going to see that for the most part, there was not a significant amount of turn back as far as change in net position with the exception of that wind turbine fund that, that had a, a increase in their net position of 314 grand. For the most part, everything is relatively similar to what you would have seen in the prior year. Although I believe the Glenn Farm Equestrian, the final fund on there was a new fund in fiscal '17.
That was a new, a new contract.
Correct. Pages 39 and 40, these are your fiduciary fund net position and changes in net position. As we alluded to earlier, the pension trust fund and the OPEP trust fund had a, a pretty sizable turn back in their investments, 90 grand relative to, you know, 691,000 and 5.7 million relative to 46 million. So a pretty, pretty good year for, for your investments. As we move into the notes to the financial statements, I could go through them one by one, but I think it might be better for me to point out some of the ones that are more important for the council to, to note.
So, so on the, got a quick question. Because I see do other funds multiple places with, over multiple funds? In the accounting system in the file that you're giving to look at? Let me ask you that. Let me rephrase this.
Yep.
So you do an audit based on financial data in a, in a, in a raw data sheet that they hand you?
Correct.
And from that point, because we only see do other funds.
Yep.
It's in multiple spots.
Mm-hmm.
There's no link to where the money's owed.
Okay.
There's this global place where there's money. Like right now, we had a revenue shortfall-
Yep.
Of 1.5 million, right? Of unpaid taxes, deferred, deferred income.
Okay.
So that'll come in next year and as a matter of fact, we reported out tonight that 1,036,111 is almost in.
But that's not necessarily from the year before as-
This is prior year. I'm reading prior year.
As, as Mr. Hefflin said, that, that, well, when we had the report just 45 minutes ago, he said that that, you asked about the one large taxpayer that hadn't come in and it hasn't.
That's still in the revenue for this year that's short, going to be short again.
That would go towards prior year collections now.
Right. But the difference between, so the difference between prior year, all right, of being estimated at 1.1 million versus 1,36,111, we're probably at the point where, you know, the math says that, I can't tell whether he was paying. That was the reason I asked the question because it looked like we'd solved the problem or, or the problem got solved. And, and now maybe it hasn't. So that's good. Good to know.
Our, our issue going forward with that number is because Matt is doing such a good job, we're not going to have as much in prior year taxes. So that number's going to have to be budgeted lower. If he's cleaning up the, if, if we're getting more people to pay on time and he's doing a very nice job of cleaning up older taxes that haven't been paid, there's less, lack of a better term, low hanging fruit to grab.
I, I don't understa, I don't get that one, but, but that's okay. But that doesn't make sense according to the audit because the audit said we had a $1.5 million short, short of in revenue this year, which is going to be delayed income next year. I'll find it on the report. Hold on.
Just go right back to the revenue.
It'd be a delayed, it'd be a delayed inflow.
I think you're looking on page 30.
I'm prior in. Everything is on page, yes, I got a highlight. Total deferred inflows. So in, in our current year budget, it's 1.1. Because of this number should be 1.5 next year.
Well, 400,000 is ambulance receipts.
Understand, we, and I don't know how that works because we budgeted 800,000, we thought we had 700 and all of a sudden you come in and do, oh, your math and we're 428,000 short and we didn't have that shortfall on our June 2016 year end, which we got in August.
This is a deferred inflows of resources doesn't necessarily represent a shortfall. It represents the difference between what your total billing was and what you had collected for the first year minus the 60-day accrual. So basically what you're looking at here for deferred inflows and outflows is a tool to budget the subsequent year when it's cumulative and effective taxes.
Right. So at end, so, so at end, so at end of year in June, we had in the financial statement, I may have it right here with me, and I do, we had the, the ambulance at 766,348 where we budgeted 800. And I'm sitting here thinking all the money came in through all of my, my presence on the council through the year. And when I finally get to the audit report, I'm not doubting that there was, that there wasn't 700 and, help me out here for a minute, I gotta find the line item again. 766,348 that was billed, right? But I'm finding out that 428,836 was not received, it's on the books to be received, correct?
That's correct. That's what the 428 represents. It's billings that are yet to be received.
Just like, just like the line above it on page 31, it's 1,082,557.
30, page 30.
That's correct. That is tax receipts.
That are not paid, not paid within the 60 days but erode the town.
That's correct. But it represents not only 2016's tax levy, but also a 15 through 2014.
Oh, so any.
But if, but if you look, but if you look at the numbers other than, and I don't know where it is, you can help me out. I'd like to buy a vol from the auditor.
What number are you looking for?
There's a, there's a previous year tax and it shows the taper. And the taper is virtually only $40,000 other than one year beyond. There's not very many that are, that it's owed.
I think what you're talking about is the scheduled property tax receivables, is that correct?
Yep. Right. And eventually we just sell the property.
And that's on page 160. Well, I believe all the receivables and somebody needs to correct me if I'm wrong because I, again, I did the overall review, that these receivables would be those amounts that have not been taken as tax title or taxable charges. This is outstanding tax receivables that are still on your books.
Okay. All right. I understand the, like, we can move on.
And just, so you, you just do, one of the reasons why I kind of stood up, on page 72, you will say they do to and do from each of the funds.
Yeah.
Descriptions. And in essence, what most communities do, Kyle, Rand, Rhode Island, but also in Massachusetts, is they often use the cash as a pooled cash concept. And so a fund may not have the cash necessary to operate that fund, so they borrow from, they borrow monies.
From the other funds.
Exactly.
Yes.
So what you're seeing here is the summary as required by the standards to be noted in your notes to your financial statements as to which funds have borrowed which amounts of money from the opposite funds. This should be helpful where you're seeing to do froms. It also applies to the other financing sources and uses or what's referred to often in the statements, the transfers in and the transfers out.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that is a good, I'm glad you brought that.
No, I saw, I have, I have 72 and I have it highlighted. Great. I understand that. That's what I thought was happening. But when you have the same transfer in and the transfer outs, you don't get to see the, you know what it is, but there's no note here linking it and the amount. You have to determine that between the different funds. I got that one.
Yeah, you kind of don't know which funds go to which. You know what I mean?
I'm okay with that. I'll go figure that out.
Yeah, that's-
Agreed. So, so in, in particular, in Rhode Island, the requirement is, or the, the preference is to show all the funds separate in the back of the financial statements. So as supplementary information, we have included all of those other funds. So when you were speaking earlier of the warrant funds and the capital projects, all your other funds are also noted in the back of the financial statements. If you, to look through each one of those, you could actually see which specific fund owes the other fund monies with regard to the borrowing of each of the funds. So these are all sorts of modeling, they're not loans to each fund. They're really a sharing of a pooled cash concept, if you will.
Right.
In order to expedite the payment of expenditures or the receipt of revenue from a particular source of-
Mm-hmm.
Correct. But again, I'm, I'm thinking those transfers are within a reasonable period of time, like the 1.5 we just talked about. Because when you looked at the, the revenue over years, collected over years, it gets down to 40 to, it, the first year, like last year was, we had a million dollar overpay, right? So, so it got, everything went to, almost the value went to zero. But there's '07, '08, there's 43,000, there's, there's houses that didn't sell, we couldn't, we didn't take a bit of, is how I understand. Those are properties still with tax leads.
There's receivables from tax title and there's receivables from project.
Right.
That's correct.
So if we stick with page 72 for a minute, I have a couple of questions while we're on it. So what are the other financing sources?
So those are-
I understand the do to and from.
So the other financing sources and uses is the language that's required by the standard. But what you see in your financial statements and what you generally budget as a council is transfers in and transfers out. So the biggest amount that you see here is the $30 million that's the transfer out, that's the appropriation for education.
33.
And the transfer in, that appropriation for education as well. The other smaller amounts are amounts that may be transferred between one fund and another for a particular reason and are so noted by the total caption. So it's either a budgetary item. I think we talked earlier, well, Kyle talked earlier about the 250 in the general fund being a budgeted item. Some are not necessarily budgeted items, but items that have been approved by this council to transfer between fund types.
So the other financing sources are not from other funds? They're from?
Well, they're from other governmental or enterprise funds.
Okay.
Funds within the city, town rather, I didn't call it city.
Okay.
Funds within the town.
I got you.
Funds outside of the town.
Okay. So there could be enterprise funds or grants or whatever.
That's correct.
Yep. Okay. So this page, so I see the general fund, other financing sources, $250,000 is going into the general fund. What is that from?
That $250,000 came out of the general fund or came out of taxes and paid down the 701 to 387, correct? We budgeted 250 to pay off part of the enterprise fund that is the wind turbine generator, which is what you just said 10 minutes ago.
No, 250 is a financing source in the general fund.
That's right. It's a, it's a transfer in.
It's a transfer in from-
From our budget, from the budget. So that wind turbine generator fund had $250,000 that came out of the budget and went into the enterprise fund and take the number down from 701 to 387, which Kyle explained 10 minutes ago.
This is actually, that $250,000 that you're talking about is money related to Glenn Manor?
I would think that would be-
That's what I thought it was.
Which was the town capital project fund and that money was transferred in as a revenue in the general fund.
Okay. Because it doesn't come out of the budget because that is the general fund. So, so the 11, 747, do to other funds from the general fund, that's just kind of hanging out there waiting to be, waiting for money from the general fund to go to those other funds to pay them back.
Correct.
So do you take that into consideration when you figure out fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll get back to that. Thank you.
Some of the other notes that I think would be important for the council to, I'm sure you've seen them on your own, but I'll bring them to your attention anyhow, are the capital assets note and that starts on page 67.
67, yes.
This is just going to give you an idea of, you know, maybe not specific assets, but the, the type, the classification of assets that the town would have invested in, in the school in fiscal '17. So we see that we start with on a governmental basis, $34 million worth of capital assets on the books last year as compared to $39.4 million on the, on the books this year. And, you know, we saw that when we looked at the town capital project fund, the major fund, that a majority of those expenditures were picked up as capital assets. So just always good to see where your money is, your capital, capital money's being invested in.
Yep.
Pages 69 and 70.
Can we go back to 67 for a second?
Yeah, sure.
We talk about vehicles. We had 3,145,614. We increased by 249,408. Is that a, is that purchased or leased? And if it isn't leased, or if it isn't a purchase, then how do we handle the lease on the sheet, on the sheet?
A lease would be fully capitalized when you first go into a lease agreement.
The first day of the lease?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Your turn. Pages 69 and 70, these are your, your long-term debt. So you would see that there were increases in your, in your general obligation bonds of 12.4 million in fiscal '17. You would also see some increases in your, your capital leases and your, the premiums, the $296,000 that you see for your premium.
Yep.
That, that was portion of the 12.4 million on the previous page. If you were to add those two together, you'd get to about 12.7 million, which ties directly to your debt issuance revenues on your governmental funds. Also, I had pointed out earlier that your compensated absences liability actually went down due to everyone retiring and you can, you can see that here, starting at a little over $2 million and decreasing down to 1.75. Moving forward to your, your OPEP note on page 76, we reported that the town's OPEP liability would be about 20.7 million, 20.75, 2.76 million. You can see here that the full liability is, is 21.8 million and that you have 1.1 million worth of net position related to that. So that is about 5% funded. Earlier also, I spoke about the importance of a discount rate and where that gets set at. So if you look at page 79, you're going to see in fiscal '17, there was a discount rate for the town OPEP plan at 3.71%. If that had gone down or if your assets didn't perform at 3.71 and it's at 2.71, you can see there's about a 2.3 million dollar jump in your liability. So- So, a lower discount rate is going to be a more conservative approach, which certainly you're well aware of. But also, right below that, the healthcare trend rate is having a significant impact on your OPEB liability. Right now, you have it set at 9%, decreasing to 5% over time, and that's pretty much right where we've seen every other municipality. I actually haven't seen that rate be, be lower or higher anywhere. So, consistent with, with what we tend to see from an actuary, but that is going to have a big impact on the liability that you carry. As it relates to the schools portion of their OPEB liability, if you move to page 82, you're going to see that there was a total OPEB liability of 3.9 million and that it was not funded. On page 84, you're going to see that the school used a discount rate that was different than what the town used. Basically, what happens is the actuary comes in and sees your discount rate and says, okay, you want your discount rate to be, say, 7.5%. Well, if you have sufficient funds to cover your, to cover your costs, if the plan is adequately funded, that's, that's what your discount rate ends up being. If your discount rate is, or, excuse me, if you don't have adequate funds, like right now, 5% wouldn't be adequate to cover your, to cover your costs. What they do is they take your discount rate and they apply that to all the periods that your, your assets would cover your costs, and then they use municipal rate to cover the years that your assets wouldn't cost. So, what you end up with are blended rates. The, the schools rate ends up being a little bit lower than yours, and that's due to the fact that the plan isn't funded at all. So, they're right on the municipal bond yield, whereas you do have assets in your plan, so your discount rate is slightly higher. But it's a blended rate. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Jumping to page 91, this is your private plan, and we see here that the total liability is 92.75-ish million, and your plan position is 52.9 million, leaving us with a liability of 39.8 that we discussed earlier, and that your plan is funded at 57, a little over 57%. Right below that are the actuarial assumptions, where I was talking about the mortality tables. So, if you wanted to see where it shows that you're using tables from 2014, it's right there. The following page, page 92. To give you an idea also here, I know we just looked at this with the OPEB plans, but it's certainly important to look at for your pension plan, too, the discount rate analysis and whether your assets perform at less than 6.75% or more than 7, or more than 6.75%. So, you can see, you know, a 3/4% difference between yourselves and the state, just what kind of impact that has on your liability. And it's, it's certainly, as the council president referred to, a more conservative and probably realistic approach to, to your liability. On page 107, there is a new tax disclosure. Basically, Gatsby 77 says that you have to include any tax increment financing agreements, what they call their TIFs, and they have to become public knowledge, and that would be when you gave, you know, a company or a corporation maybe an abated tax, tax amount in order to have them be with you in the town. So, we're required to show that, and that's something that you would see this year that you wouldn't have seen in the prior year.
Does that, does that have a value, a maximum or minimum value?
Oh, it's whatever is set by the, by the council ordinance, because I don't know off the top of my head.
No, but every penny that has a TIF is in here.
Correct.
Yep.
That's what I was trying to figure out. Thanks for the thought.
I have a question on that page.
Sure.
107. It's not for you. It says, I'm looking at liabilities and commitments. It is the opinion of the government's council that resolution of some of these matters may have a material effect on the financial condition of the government. We're talking about lawsuits. Are there any new lawsuits, Mr. Gavin, that could have an effect on us since the last time we talked? I know it's been quite a while, actually.
No.
No?
Nothing came to mind for me.
Okay.
We want to jump forward quite a bit to page 162. So, pages 162 through 169, the state has undergone an initiative to be able to create a transparency portal where they can compare every town and cities and school departments' expenditures compared to each other to have an idea of who's spending money where. This is only the second year that they've implemented this, and the first year, there was about four entities that took part in it. So, it was very, very close group. This year, they added a few more, and Portsmouth elected to be a part of this transition. In a lot of ways, this, this report is great, but it's, it's caused a lot of struggle for some clients. We received, the first MTP report we received back from any of our clients was Portsmouth's. So, the school and the town both took a very proactive approach to have this information available. So, I thought I'd, I'd point that out to you.
So, this, help me, help me understand this. This is a new portal that's, that's installed at the state?
Yep.
Like, can go to whoever's participating and see what they now spend under each line item?
Correct. I've not visited the portal, so I don't know exactly how it will read to you, but I believe that's their intention.
Is this, is this special software that does this?
I just get the report back from them. I'm not sure how their transparency portal actually works.
We must give them the data.
Yeah, we're, they have a, this is the MTP 2 that gets into the financial statements. They send us a blank MTP 1, and they give you instructions on which expenditures to include. That MTP 1 gets given to Steve Coleman at the state. Steve generates this MTP 2, and it's given to us to put into the financial statements.
Okay.
And from my experience with them last year and this year, they scrutinize every dollar that goes into that report. So, they, they take it very seriously. So, to get this back so soon was impressive.
I'm more concerned that they scrutinize it in the wrong way and try and find ways not to give us extra revenue, because we're doing things the right way.
Yeah, we do get penalized.
That could certainly be a concern. Unfortunately, we're sort of at the, at their mercy in that we have to, they tell us we have to include it, we have to include it.
So, on page 163, I've got that 250 highlighted, and to reiterate, that's the transfer in from the Glen Manor House.
That's correct.
Yeah.
The remainder of the report, the report is mostly statistical information, trend information for the, for the town. I just kind of get that information and look through, make sure it seems reasonable.
Which I appreciate. I've never seen that before in an audit report.
But it essentially reiterates everything that has happened that we've gone through. I mean, I'm more than happy to field a question about it, but. So, that is the financial statements. I don't know if you want me to go through the single audit before we go through questions or how you want to approach that, but whatever works best for you.
Why don't you go through the single audit, and then we'll have questions from both any counselors and the general audience as well.
So, the single audit, we do, we report on two things. We report on your internal controls over your day-to-day activities. So, this being our first year working with you, we focused on some of the more general areas, making sure that there's proper internal controls to help prevent and detect fraud from occurring. So, this year, we focused in on your cash receipts, on your cash disbursements, on your payroll. We would have looked through any abatements or exemptions that were given out. We focus on both your property tax revenue and your miscellaneous revenue to try to get a good feel for really how everything works here. If we had a significant deficiency or a material weakness to report to you, this is where it would go. Happy to report that we did not note any material weakness or significant deficiencies in your, in your internal controls.
Do you select those?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and we try to do it somewhat random. So, next year, there may be an area that we, you know, that we looked at in the first year, but maybe in not so much detail because it was not a material amount of money. We may look at different areas each year. The guidance requires us to make sure that we focus on a lot of different areas. If you were to look at page six, you'd see that federal dollars for fiscal year '17 came in at 1.7 million dollars. That's federal dollars that were spent, and we're required anytime an entity has received more than $750,000 to, to perform a single audit. And the programs that we selected this year were your special education IDEA Part B Fund and your Impact Aid Fund. So, on page eight, you'd see that we tested both of those programs. Now, when I say.
Not looking at the same pages. My page six, my page eight has elected town officials.
That's the, that's the main audit. He's looking at the single audit, which is the only, the 20, there's 12 pages.
It's a separate report.
Separate report. It's not the bound piece.
It's not the bound.
Not the bound piece.
Where is it?
That was in the first pack that you got. There was two, there was bound one, or the.
There you go.
Got it.
The one right at the top. There you go. So, right, page eight would state that we tested special education and Impact Aid. When I say tested, what we're required to do is follow the federal compliance requirements. They give us a laundry list of items that we have to check to make sure that the funds are being spent properly. So, as an example, we test to make sure that the funds are spent on, on eligible costs. We make sure that any procurement is followed for items that are spent over five grand, that they go up for quotes, anything over 25 grand, that they go up for bids. We test reporting to the state and the multitude of other compliance requirements. And having tested both those programs, I'm happy to report that we did not note any instances of non-compliance.
Any further questions for Kyle while he's there?
Yeah, so, your certifications on the second document we got, the bound document, not the first?
Correct.
Okay. Because I didn't think there was going to be a revision. The second thing is you're pretty confident all the numbers are in the right columns.
I'd like to think so.
I would hope so. That's what we're paying you for.
Right.
Well, and I, and I understand that's why there's a revision, because there was some things moved around.
Correct. That was at the request of, of the town.
My only concern is when, again, you, you're a new, a new vendor to the town. I would, I would like to say that maybe I would have liked to talk to you about a, you know, as we set up this contract, because I didn't see the RFP, I would have liked to have had a face-to-face, just so expectations are, are met. Any concerns we had, maybe you would have looked at?
Yeah, I would have been happy to do that.
Yeah, we didn't get that chance, and bad for So, the, the thing that brought up, and you brought it up, you know, you said we're going to have other questions about the 600,000, and it's nice that you know it. So, I want to ask one question, because you've now agreed that all the numbers are in the right columns. When I originally went through my analysis, I thought we had a, like a 436,000 deficit, loss of revenue, and I had an over expenditure. And on page 110, you also state that there's a 303,000, an eight dollar, and 179,462 total over expenditures. So, I guess my question to you, in the true words of transparency and the understanding of the meaning of deficit, I determined that we had a deficit at that point.
Okay.
Is that true?
Well, if you look at your bottom line in that general fund, you have a surplus of 300,000, but you also have the bond revenue coming in for the $600,000.
So, I'm going to ask you this one more time, and I'll ask it not left-handed thought, because that's what I do. All my spreadsheets start at the, start at, you know, at the bottom, all the totals are on the left and at the top, so I don't ever have to look anything past the first sheet. Without the $600,000 of added revenue, did the town end up with a deficit?
Yes.
So, we didn't have a surplus?
Corrected with a deficit in the general fund, without the 600,000.
There's a shortfall in your budgetary revenue, and a shortfall in your budgetary.
Right.
Right, and again, and when I looked at, when I finally got to the August, and I get to see it after the fact, right? I get it in my August 28 data, my end-of-year close, June, on my June end-of-year close. I determined we had about a half a million dollars of shortfall. We had a town administrator with an overrun in his, in his technology funds at 19. The police was over by 80. And again, this is, these are my rough numbers. They're not audited, they're not, I couldn't make a match even the, the first report where you moved money around, considerable money around, but it never changed the balance. In finance, you thought it was 233,000. I thought it was 200, being up by $30,000. It's not an awful lot of money. But you're certifying us with a surplus, and you know something's up with the 600,000 about controls, and you, and we didn't look at them. So, I guess the question I have is to Mr. Rayner and not to you, because you've confirmed we had a deficit. Like, why didn't we know?
In the reports, all the monthly reports and in the last quarterly report, there's three quarterly reports, in the final quarterly report and in the final monthly report. I believe, I don't have the figure in front of me, but I, I bet you do. I believe we reported about a surplus of about 300, I wound it off, 340,000 is what we anticipate.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't remember that, because the last thing I remember getting was this, this memo on August 9th, and I'll read you the, Mr. Rayner, Mr. John Makey budget update attached. It is the budget update for June 2000, and I realize it's not 60 days beyond the end of the year. This represents the end of the year, fiscal year, prior to the result of the annual audit. This means we, there is still some adjusting, still adjusting to the end-of-the-year reports, and there were not any large wire transfers. Having a deficit confirmed from the auditor.
I believe what the auditor just said is, if you didn't, if we did not put that $600,000 bond proceed into the general fund, if you take away $600,000, yes, there would have been a deficit. That $600,000, we all know what that was, you know, so I don't want to go through, back, back through the history of that again. But when we had the judgment against the town for $800,000, we had 30 days to pay it, and back in October of 2016, the finance director then, two nights before the settlement, had reported to the council that he was. before the settlement, had reported to the council that he was anticipating, his exact words were hoping for a surplus of 200,000. After that settlement, he left, the interim finance director came in, the audit was still ongoing, we never got the, we didn't get the audit until January, but we had 30 days to pay the settlement. So, we needed 600,000. That was bonded for in December, but prior to that bonding, we had to pay the settlement. So, this 600,000 was taken out of the general fund, out of operating funds, and then the proceeds of the bond was put into the general fund, into the operating fund, so we paid ourselves back. The audit, as you remember, put the expenditure into the 2016 audit, and then the question was, where would the 600,000 proceed go? And of course, it went into this fiscal year's audit. So, while it is correct to say that if we took 600,000 out of the budget, there would be a deficit, but we could say that if I took a million dollars out of the budget, there would be a deficit. I could tell you, if the 600,000 had to be paid back to the town, that's the way we did it. And now, what we did throughout the year, you'll remember that there was, there was a time when the previous finance director was not submitting the monthly reports, we rectified that. So, all the monthly reports from, I believe, November of last year, all the way through the end of fiscal year, were submitted, as well as the quarterly reports. And as I stated, there was no attempt to disguise anything. We were operating under the assumption, before prorated receipts and then finalizing bills, and that 60 days following the closeout of the fiscal year, we were anticipating a surplus of, in the neighborhood of 300,000, which is what is being reported tonight.
So, if I could just add to that a little bit, I think this particular transaction is extremely unique in that you're crossing two fiscal years. Your town council, and I'm not sure that it's your town, present town council or another town council, represented to the prior auditors that the contingency or the commitment was due. And so, as your town administrator just described to you, the expense was recorded in 2016's audit. So, you had the expense-
And paid in '16.
And paid in '16.
Out of the surplus from '16.
Out of the surplus from the previous year.
But it really wasn't paid out of surplus. If you look at, indirectly, it may have been, but if you look at '16, you did not budget even the surplus into the '16 budget. You may have intended that's where it was coming from, but you didn't budget for it, as well as the 600,000 in the current year, you didn't budget for it. So, although that may have been your intention to budget for proceeds, what you probably should have done now in hindsight, right, was to include a budget amendment in your 2016 budget to include the issuance of debt for 600,000, 200,000 coming from town surplus, and then the 800,000 worth of expenditure, and you would have had the matching of the three transactions in the same year. What you've got going on here is you've got part of the transactions in your 2016-
Right.
Bottom line, and you've got part of the transactions in your 2017, which skewed both bottom lines. It skewed the '16 bottom line, and it's skewing the '17 bottom line. If we exclude that transaction completely, what you want to look at is the budget to actual, excluding the entire transaction, because that entire transaction really stands on its own. You borrowed 600,000, you took 200,000 from your surplus, and you paid the vendor, or you paid the plaintiff, I guess, in this particular case, and the deficit. So, in here, in '17, in '16's audit, you should have been removing the expenditure, the surplus should have been higher. In the '17 budget, you've got the revenue, but you don't have the expenditure, so you don't have the matching of the concepts. Both transactions don't meet the definition of a restatement to your financial statements. So, we didn't go back and say, well, prior auditors should have included the budgetary transactions for the 600, because it doesn't meet that definition of a restatement. In the '17 audit, we included the surplus, meaning the revenue from the bond issuance, even though you didn't budget for it, because you talked about it in the '16 audit. We only included those, that source of revenue from the bonding. So, Mr. Rayner is correct in that the bottom-line transactions that you probably were receiving, and I didn't see the documents, but from the finance director, would have showed surplus all year long, because it would have had the proceeds in it from back in December, or when you borrowed, November, when you borrowed the funds in the first place. But this gentleman, Councilman-
Kessin.
Kessin, sorry.
I'm just asking.
Is correct in that if you look at just the revenue by itself, excluding the transaction, and the expenditures by themselves, excluding the transactions, you have a deficit.
I understand-
For the revenue, you overspent your expenditures.
So, again, it's, it's like, I'm not angry, but I've had enough, because I've spent quite a few hours trying to figure this out. The bottom line is, you believe we had a deficit minus the 600,000?
With shortfall-
A shortfall of revenue and an over expenditure.
That's correct. On a budgetary basis of accounting, that's correct.
The second problem I have is to be budget compliant, and I'm confused, because you're happy with the way the transaction went down, and I have a-
You say I was happy with it. I said it doesn't fit the definition of a restatement. I would not have treated it that way had I been here a year ago.
And I don't think I would have either. But this is where we are today.
And the transaction's complete, so when we look at '18, it has no effect on this transaction.
It has, it has an effect on the way things are presented, right? Because we didn't, we didn't, without, without it, we wouldn't have had a surplus. Okay? And in my home, as it is, no different than a town budget, it's on a fixed income. And when I don't have the income, I don't go borrow it. I don't go borrow for groceries today, okay? Because I got to buy groceries tomorrow. So, why didn't we just, I don't think it was ever presented to the council, which is the reason we got to 600,000, why didn't we just replace the revenue? And instead of, like you said, the 1.5 that we had a shortfall, it's going to, this revenue is going to come in, right? This revenue was part of the one, the 3.3 shortfall in revenue is going to get re-amortized next year. We can't take care of the short, the over expenditure of 179 on page 110.
Not all of the 303 is going to come in. You're not going to gain back any of the lease and rentals. If you're, if you're anticipating that we're going to get all 367,805 in property taxes back-
Right, but I'm, but I'm borrowing 600,000 to pay bills, and I got to go buy groceries tomorrow.
Right, no.
You borrowed the 600,000 to pay the plaintiff in the case.
No, we didn't, because it came out of-
Yes, we did.
It came out of 2016, I'm sorry.
Okay, but we did not know in October and November, when Dave took out the bond and came to us and said, "We need the bond," we did not know we had 800,000 surplus.
Because we didn't have proper reporting.
Yeah, because we didn't have proper reporting.
Fine.
Exactly.
And that's in the past.
Beyond that.
And I can go, I'll go further in the past. If we didn't make a dumb decision and get rid of a road, we wouldn't have had an 800,000 deficit.
I got, I got that.
Oh, really? Yeah, and if we didn't have Lombardo into video, we wouldn't have spent a million dollars on an alternative sewer-
This isn't the question, I don't want to go here.
And if we didn't have a wind turbine, we might not have lost another million there.
So, we're going to stop with revisionist history.
And if we didn't, and if we had, you know-
I'm not going over history, sir.
Yeah. Oh, well, you know, you opened the door, Mr., Mr. Like, yeah, we used to, we used to bond 750,000 every single year for the school committee, too.
700.
Every single year. That's like paying the Heidi Drive settlement every single year.
Yeah, and we'll stop that.
All right, let's, let's go. Yeah, let's go to the past, okay? So, you know-
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order. Let's move on. Let's, let's, let's talk about today and not go back there.
Okay.
I'm tired of sitting here and people using that as a political bombshell.
Let's not go back there.
He's another Republican, why would he be using that as a political bombshell?
Let's talk about the fact that, yes, we have some controls that could have been done better. The fact is, as the state is concerned, we have a balanced budget, and we have a minor surplus. There are controls that could have been placed better, we've replaced the finance director to help control that, and we're moving on in the future. Mr. Kessin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Which is the reason I drove to this point and didn't want all the other manumsha. On under title 45, chapter 4512, dash 22 dot four, deficits and pensions, and it's inability of a town to secure a long-term debt to pay, to pay budget deficits. Are we, you certified this audit, and there's one exemption under 459 under this particular law, which is about 45 more pages to read, which I didn't have when I finally had this pop out on the second version of the audit. I'm wondering, because I know you guys know what controls are, if we, if we accept and put this document on file, are we breaking state law?
No, because again, you budgeted, you bonded the 600,000 to pay the plaintiff. You did not borrow to pay operating expenses. When bond counsel approved, Moody's and bond counsel approved you to borrow the money, you borrowed it to pay the plaintiff. Ultimately, you may have used the cash to pay your expenses, but you borrowed that money based on Rhode Island general laws to pay the plaintiff in this case.
Right.
Okay, so we're not breaking any laws-
No, sir.
-by accepting this audit and putting it on file?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Kyle from the council? Mr. Fitzmaurice, I'm sure you have a couple of questions. Kyle, I'll just ask you to stand back for a quick second, then if you can respond to them, if there is a response needed. And Mr. Fitzmaurice, you understand that you got to bring that down a little bit, right?
Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. I'd like to restrain my comments to the year-reading audit, which is the FY16-17 year. It ended in June 30th of last year, 2017, in case anybody at home is still watching Now, if I use the documents, and I want to speak to the 600,000, if I use the documents provided by the town's financial manager as of June 30th, 2017, I see an entry in here that we're bringing in 600,000. That is not in the original budget. And it wasn't, for whatever reasons we were doing this, it was not in the original budget. And my reading of a number of different sources bring me to be concerned about that. First question I would like to have is, does anybody know when we transferred this 600,000 into this fiscal year's budget, into the '17 fiscal year budget? What was the date that we transferred the money out of that account? So, I understand that the proceeds were in a bank account. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll have to give you the date. I mean, it was shortly after the bond sale, which would have been in-
The payment was made in '16, the bonds were sold.
I understand when that, when that happened, I'm talking about when the funds were transferred from the account where the proceeds of the bond sales-
It was sometime in the fourth quarter, because that's when it appeared in our budget report.
Well, I was, Ms. Pedro, that's my point. This doesn't show up until after the end of the fiscal year. So, when was it we transferred it into the, out of that account and into the general fund? Does anybody know?
I don't have that date for you, but that report is not post-fiscal year. That report was for June 30th, so it's not-
Well, it was handed out in, I think, August 18th.
August 9th.
August 28th, sorry.
And that's correct. Normally, the reports come out, I think there was a, a date that we canceled a town council meeting. So, normally, the second, it's the second meeting after the end of the month where the report is given. I believe that second meeting in July was canceled, if my memory serves me correct. I'd have to go back and look, which is why that report was delivered in August.
Well, I understand that, you know, you have some delay. I'm not disputing the delay. What I'm asking again is when the money was transferred in, because if I look at the documents available to me in the monthly fund and the quarterly summary, in this case, the end-of-year quarterly summary, that's the first time I see this money in here. It's not in the original budget at all. It's coming into this-
It's my opinion-
Into this budget.
It's my opinion it shouldn't be in the budget. Again, we have these transfer from funds to funds. We owed this money because of the settlement. So, you, so you put in, owed to the general fund 600,000, the bond proceeds come in, it comes in, they were sold in January, the money came in before February, you immediately fill in the manumsha in the background, the transfer of funds to funds for 600,000. It was never include, you're filling the general fund is where the money originally came from. It didn't come out of this year's budget.
I understand.
It came out of the general fund.
But it didn't come out of the FY17 budget either.
No, it didn't come out of the '17, and it doesn't belong in this budget.
Well, I can see your point, Mr. Kessin.
That's the point, that's the point that I was trying to understand, because it never showed up on any of these budgets corrected until the June, till after the June time hit, timeframe hit in the end of the year.
Well, if I look to, again, the documents that I'm referring to, the end of quarter and end-of-year FY17, as of June 30th, report, the town finance director, I see a 246,765, sorry, 675 deficit in revenues from property taxes levied by the town enforcement. That's at the end of the year. There's a deficit of 246,000 and change in revenues received from the levy of property taxes. Without the contribution, without the movement of that monies into this budget, there would have been a deficit equal to that amount. Now, I'm not talking about overspending here, I want to make it clear, I'm talking about a lack of revenue. Whether it can be anticipated, whether it can't, is another issue, but that should have been reported to the council, and I don't believe that it was. Because we did have a deficit, and if we hadn't been moving an additional 600,000 into this budget, for whatever purposes, we would have still had that, we would have had that deficit, as the auditor has indicated. But that's where the deficit comes from, as far as I can see. And maybe somebody can tell me otherwise, but when I look at the documents before me, again, the quarterly report for the end of the June, the end of the FY17, that's what I get. And if I start subtracting numbers, I end up with 246, because it's not identified in this report, nor was it identified in the coverage letter from Mr. Minkie. So, you know, I'm left with a couple of questions here, at least three, four. And that is that the normal process before the council, when we start moving funds, is to ask for permission. And if we start moving monies out of a bond into the general fund, it certainly is the purvey of the council. Our charter requires any movement among departments of funds to be approved by the council. That's where the authority lies. I would say that that definitely applies to any additional funds brought into a budget, because we have an ordinance that authorizes, among other things, the total expenditures of the town and the total- of the town and the total revenues. Now, I don't think we exceeded expenditures, but we did exceed revenues projected. So, you know, it's a problem. And the way I see these things, this bond, I'm sorry, this budget ordinance is a local law, binds all of us, including the council, till it changes it. But the council doesn't appear to have been informed, from what I can see, of this revenue deficit in the levied taxes. And when this money was moved in, the $600,000, I'd asked about it, I think it was August 28th, before this council. What we were going to do, the $600,000, the response was, we're going to talk to the auditors and see what, what they think, and then it will be brought before the council for its resolution. And that, as far as I know, wasn't done. I'm here most nights, as you know, if not all nights, and I don't remember any of that happening.
I think what we were referring to back then, Mr. Fitzmaurice, I think what we were referring to back then during that discussion, and I may have been mistaken, but I think we were talking about what we would do with the surplus, and that referred to a discussion in the previous audit, when we were discussing the warrant, how we would pay that warrant down. And back then, the decision was, we would wait to see what the surplus was for the following year, and then we would come to the council with a recommendation on how to pay that warrant down. That's what, that's, and if it didn't come out that articulately, that's exactly what I meant.
Well, I reviewed the recording this afternoon at the advice of others, and I'm the one that asked the question. My intent was to ask, what are we going to do with the $600,000 proceeds from the bond? And I believe that's the question I asked. Now, obviously, we can all get confused about things, but that doesn't change anything. We still are supposed to come forward to council and get a vote to stick this in the budget.
And I think what, as Ms. Shahidi just explained, the $600,000 was spent to pay the plaintiff, to pay Rhode Island nurseries. The $600,000 that we had went into the general fund, and I'll, I'll get an answer for exactly when that was transferred in.
But it was never budgeted. There's no revenue line item of this money coming into the general fund.
The problem I have is...
Until at the very end, and possibly after the end, the close of this year.
But I, I guess I'm confused, because what, yeah, please.
Can I just add in, because this transaction is, to me, very complicated?
Yes.
And convoluted, because it crosses two fiscal years.
Correct.
You can make that same argument in last fiscal year, that you booked $800,000 worth of legal expense to pay the plaintiff, that you didn't budget.
We already made that last year.
Yeah, we made that last year.
But these transactions cross, so I completely agree that you should have had an amendment to the budget, I think I said that earlier. When this transaction got approved to pay the plaintiff, you should have had an amendment to the budget at that time to cover all three pieces of this transaction, the 200 coming from fund balance, the $600,000 that you've been borrowing, and the $800,000 expense.
Because, may I just throw in one more thing here? In any given year, now, just, just answer this question. In any given year, if we don't spend all the money that was budgeted, the balance goes in the fund balance, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, so there you go.
So, so if you borrowed the money...
So we...
So you took away from 2016's fund balance, you took away from 2016's fund balance...
That's right.
$800,000.
Which should have been voted on.
Let's just use this transaction. You took away from 2016's fund balance, $800,000, for which you supported 200,000 of it with fund balance.
Right.
So it adds to the 200,000.
That was already in there.
600,000. You put back the 600,000.
Into the fund balance.
Into the fund balance.
Into the fund balance.
Not into the operating budget.
Not into the operating budget. That's the point.
But in order to get to, and that's why you're seeing it as a transfer in.
No, because the transfer in...
But the, the money that was used from 2016 was not in the fund balance as of yet. It was a surplus that when the auditor from last year accounted for it, he said, hey, you already made, I'm trying to think of a term, but you've already made plans that you're going to have this legal expense.
That's correct.
And since you have done that, we're going to send this money, we're going to take the money from that budget and bring it forward and use that to pay them.
That's correct.
And we didn't know about that.
And you booked the entire 800,000. So you booked an expense that you didn't budget for.
Well, then...
So you did just the...
And we also had a lot of, a lot of extra revenue in 16 that we didn't budget for either.
So it's in that between the two years, it really zeros itself out to fund balance. The budget issue is a completely different issue in terms of whether you have a shortfall in real estate taxes or not. You do. $367,000, where you budgeted a commitment, may not have been a levy, I don't know what percentage you budgeted of your levy, but whatever percentage you budgeted of your levy, you did not collect that.
I think that's not the point.
That's not the point.
The point is that that $600,000 belongs in the fund balance, correct?
It's going to the fund balance.
Yes, okay. And the other point is that in order to take money out of the fund balance, you're supposed to get a vote from the council.
We didn't take money out of the fund balance. It was a surplus in cash from the previous year.
When you look...
That is the way it was accounted for.
Well, the way it's accounted...
It's not, okay. I have, I have an certified public accounting nodding yes.
It's, it's that's the way it was accounted for, because you recorded in your fiscal 16 report, $800,000 to pay this plaintiff. You didn't budget for it. So you included an expense, a budgetary expense, that you didn't approve, if you want to go down that road.
Right.
That you did not approve. It probably should have gone below the line as a transfer to the plaintiff of some kind, so that it would have been clearly noted as an item that was not a budgeted expenditure item. That said, you would have had a much bigger surplus last year.
Right.
Okay? But at the end of the day, it all goes to fund balance, because your difference between your revenue, your expenditures, and those other financing sources and uses, of which we could say a use was 800,000 last year, and a source is the 600,000 you borrowed this year, all goes to fund balance. So at the end of the day, at the end of fiscal 17...
So at the end of the day, we had a deficit, because that money is in the fund balance.
We had a deficit because of a revenue shortfall.
Thank you.
I get the revenue shortfall, but, but in order to have the surplus, all right, the approved bottom line for the total money we had for 2017 was $60,668,948.
Agreed.
Adding the $600,000 to this budget, because there was not a six, there was not the $600,000 in this year's budget, in our legals showing it as a deficit, the top line, the total budget went to $61,027,587.
But you've got to combine, you're going to do it this way, you've got to combine the 16 budget, because in 16, you created a huge deficit in your expenditures, because you paid that 800,000 if you didn't budget. I don't have 16s in front of me, but I can tell you...
Yeah, I have 16 in front of me, and you're right. Yeah, you're right, and we should have done that. You're right.
But we didn't do it there either.
You're right.
We just took it out of the fund balance.
You're right.
Because we couldn't have done it, because we didn't make a, we didn't make a settlement until October.
That's correct.
So, this is, this is...
So, in hindsight, the whole transaction should have been in 17.
17, yes.
And you should have had a budget approval for a transfer.
But we, we couldn't have had a budget approval for a transfer.
But in hindsight, it's not what you did.
Right.
That wasn't what was presented in the 16 budget.
Right.
I completely agree. In hindsight, I said that to Kyle when I was reviewing it. I said, why isn't this transaction always...
In 17, which is what we said, yes, last year.
But at the time, we had, we were using advice from our, we had a finance director, we had a part-time finance director. We were using the best information available.
That's correct. And as I say earlier...
And, I mean, we keep going around and around and around. At the end of the day...
It doesn't raise itself to a mistake in the prior year, so it doesn't raise itself under the standards of accounting to a restatement. So because it doesn't raise itself to a mistake or to a restatement, it was the judgment called at the time for the parties that were involved to record the expense in 16 and the revenue, the debt service in 17.
Right. If someone had told us at the time, maybe, and it was just, we were in flux, we did not have a full-time finance manager, the other finance manager was on his way out. We all sat, four of us were in that room that night. We, we knew we were going to go to bond to pay the money. I mean, you know, we, we knew where we were going. Probably the best course of action would have been to get a budget amendment, just to, for clarity, but, I mean, how many times are we going to go around and around? I mean, there's no errors. I mean, it's an accounting thing, that maybe a budget amendment was practical, then we would have had the proper authority, the proper authorization, but I don't think it would have changed anything we did.
It wouldn't. And it wouldn't have changed the fund balance at June 30, 2017, because at June 30, 2017, the entire transaction has now been approved. So it's not changing that fund balance in comparison.
Correct.
But we're not, we're not talking about that.
We're not talking about the mathematics here.
We have that.
Here's, here's, here's where it's going. I'll, I'll just cut to the chase. Cut to the chase, make it easy. We're taking the $600,000 out, there was a surplus, there was a deficit in the budget. There are controls now in place, because we have a new finance director who took over in between, in the middle of that year, from a finance director who was putting or shoveling things around for the past three or four years. We have a town administrator who's aware of this, new practices, definitely, any moment, if, if there's, if there's a deficit in the fire department budget, because they have a big fire and there's excess in the, in the police department budget, the finance department's going to make a recommendation to come back to us and say, hey, I need to move $50,000 out of the police department to the fire department.
That's exactly...
That's the practice going forward.
That's not what we did.
Should have been the practice in the past.
And that's exactly what we did.
That's not what we did.
No, it is not what we did.
And I'm talking about...
Understood.
The year in this audit, this money was moved into the, into the fund balance, not into the general fund, into the budget, without a vote of the council. Now, I'm saying that straight out, because I'm pretty sure that's what happened.
I, I don't disagree with you.
All right. And that was outside of the charter when you did that.
And I don't disagree with you there.
All right.
Controls relaxed, and they've been corrected.
All right. And, and I'm willing to take that as an answer, and I'll move on to the, the other issues. But I've read the law that was quoted to you by Mr. Kessin regarding using bond proceeds to pay off a settlement or a deficit, and I think it's pretty tight, and I think you need to ask the solicitor for a written opinion on this one, because I'd like to see what, what his response is on this thing. And I'm referring to the part that says...
I think the response might be better to come from the auditor general, and see how they would...
I'm sorry?
It might, it might be better to get that response from the auditor general.
Well, that's, that's the council's option, but I'll read the law. Deficit pension and other post-employment benefit financing dash approval required. Paragraphes A. Except as provided in Chapter 45-9 of the general laws, no municipality shall sell a long-term bond in order to fund a deficit or to fund pension obligations or other post-employment benefits without prior approval by the state auditor in general and director of the state department of revenue.
And we did not do that. We, we sold a bond to pay, at the time the bond was put forth and brought to bond council, it was to pay off a legal settlement. Because of the crazy accounting tricks, we had that excess.
Well, I'm not... I'm not responsible for crazy accounting tricks.
Neither am I. And I'm glad that this audit is done, and this is behind us.
There's both of us. But that's what I'd like to have a legal opinion on.
Sure.
Written legal opinion.
Mr. Gavin, can you handle that for us, please? Investigate it.
You know, you'd...
What's the opinion? What's, what's the issue?
Did we break 45-12...
12-22...
You just said we did.
-4.
Question of reading the statute, and to fund a deficit, no, you said you did, you did it to pay the plaintiff a settlement, which the council was all fully aware of.
Right.
I mean, I'm going to just keep going around, circling here. I, I don't think that, I think it's, that's a kind of a letter, but it's going to come out something like that.
Yeah, I'd like to...
Mr. President, if you recall, we received a, a direct statement from the auditor general concerning this, saying that we did not violate any law, so I don't think we need to pursue this any further. I think it would be a waste of Mr. Gavin's time to prepare a statement. Mr. Hoyle provided us with an official statement regarding this matter, regarding how it was handled in the 2016 audit, and the town of Portsmouth did not do anything wrong and was not in compliance with any accounting law.
But I'm not talking about 16, I'm talking about...
That's in general, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
I don't think...
It's dealing with the $600,000, Mr. Fitzmaurice, okay?
Mr. Menke, I don't think the auditor general gave us future absolution for whatever we did on this thing. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
Right.
So I, again, I would like to have a...
Sure.
...response from the council on this.
I question, quite frankly, the citizens coming up here and telling the town council what legal claims to get from their solicitor, I think it's best to act here.
And why is that?
The council's call.
Well, maybe the council's call, but shouldn't a citizen have an opportunity to come up here and speak to the council about what's going on?
Yes.
Okay.
Next. Do you have more questions?
Well, I think we've beat this one to death. The one other thing that I would like to speak to is, and again, in the quarter ending June 2017 quarterly report from the town, there was no mention of a deficit. And as I understand the law, if I may quote it again, when you discover you have a deficit, you're supposed to notify the auditor general and the division of municipal finance. I don't think we did that. And I'm referring to...
We did consult, we did consult with the auditor general. He was very aware of what we did, and they were all in agreement that there is no deficit.
But your auditor just told you you did have a deficit.
If you take away the $600,000, there is a deficit. If I take away a million dollars, I got a deficit.
Yeah, but I, I heard that when you said that the first time.
Well, that's, I can't stay, I can't unring the bell, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking for a bell to be unring, unring. I'm just asking you to...
We've talked to the auditor general, the auditor general told us that what we did is right. We asked the auditor general, was this accounted for correctly? He said yes.
But was he talking about, because you didn't tell the state that you had a revenue deficit. You didn't do that.
There was a question put forward by a counselor, are we in a deficit status? We took that very serious. This was in June or August of, July or August of last summer. We consulted with the, the auditor, or the, the auditor general's, the state auditor general's office, and they concurred that there is no deficit for Portsmouth.
Yeah, on, in 16, you're talking about.
No.
No.
Point of order...
For 17.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that, you know, with respect to the people who are in this audience and waiting to discuss other issues, I feel like we need to stop repeating the exact same things over and over again. And I'll just have one comment, which is that I very much respect what the staff has done and what our accountants have done, because it's very clear, what has not been covered up whatsoever, but it seems that people are accusing our staff and our accountants of doing, is hiding the fact that we have $600,000 that came from a bond. That is very clear. And it became clear to us, because we now have competent financial people who are giving us regular reports about what's going on. And it seems like there's a lot of innuendo going on tonight, that somehow Mr. Rayner might have done something without proper permission, or that the town council did not approve the right things. But the fact of the matter is, is that we had a litigation settlement, and that had to be paid, and at the time, when our staff was looking at what we had, it only appeared that we had $200,000. We got approval from all the right legal authorities that we could go out and bond for $600,000 to pay our litigation costs. There is no dispute that we were acting properly. Had we not paid for that litigation cost, we would have been penalized. So that's not the problem. The only problem that keeps getting raised, and it's being couched in language like moving money around and finally getting them in the right columns. I believe that the numbers by our accountants and by our staff have always been in the right columns. We understand where that $600,000 came from. In a perfect world, had we known that we did not have to borrow it, then we would not have. But we have taken procedures to make sure that this does not happen again, and at this point, that's the best we can hope for, and I really think that asking our attorney to continue to look into an issue that's already been settled is a waste of the town's money. He is a lawyer that we're paying by the hour... He is a lawyer that we're paying by the hour. We should not be doing that. And I really would request that the chair help us move past this issue and allow the folks that are sitting here to talk to the other issues on this agenda. It's 10 minutes to 10, and I really feel we've been going around too many times. So that would be my request. Let's move on.
Mr. President, I'd like a chance to respond to Ms. Ujafisa.
Very quickly, because I think Mr. Greve wants to chime in behind you, I believe.
It will be quick. I think, I think the inference that I was here accusing people, I would like to object to. What I was doing was asking questions. And if you look at the tape, you'll see that that's what I did. I was asking, when we moved the money into the budget, did we contact the council and ask permission to move the money around? And the answers were we have before us. And I've gotten, I think, fair answers to a lot of this. But I think it's also clear that the procedures were not followed correctly. And you've pointed out, we've acknowledged that. And I think we can move ahead on that. But these procedures are in the charter, and that's not optional here. It's supposed to be followed.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
And they weren't followed for previous years because of the different finance director and how we've corrected those statements.
But I promised to only speak to FY '17.
Yep. Mr. Greve.
Tom Greve, 110th Air Drive. I'd like to take this in a slightly different direction. Based on what I've seen tonight, it seems Portsmouth does have some internal financial control issues. These issues center around missed reports, compliance requirements which are not being addressed by the audit, and also the concern that the town, my concern, that the town administrator and finance director are directly involved in the hiring and oversight of the independent public audit. The town council and school committee, I believe, should create a separate audit committee to report to them to address these issues. And this audit did not, there's a quote from the audit that says, material weak, talking about internal controls, material weaknesses may exist that not have, that have not been identified. Examples of those are, monthly financial reports were not received by the council for the first several months of this audit year. This is a major financial control issue that was not mentioned in the audit. The same problem occurred in the last few months of the previous year. Neither the council nor the state has received a year-end report from the town for the previous fiscal year 2016. I can tell you that because I have asked under the Access to Public Records Act, and both have come back saying it does not exist. The state report was due as a state compliance requirement in the 2017 audit year. The finance department not providing the council report resulted in other major financial control issues during the '17 audit year. The council, the council did not know in a timely manner that a settlement that actually had been paid was paid from the surplus. As a result, the council voted on November 28, 2016, to unnecessarily sell $600,000 in bonds to pay that settlement.
Mr. Greve, I'm going to stop you there.
Sure.
The town council did not unnecessarily borrow the money. We did not, our finance department, as far as I can tell, did not make that payment out of the surplus. It was paid for by cash, plus the $200,000 that we had budgeted. It was the accounting that brought it back and took that money out of the surplus. It wasn't necessarily, he wrote a check from 2017, 16, excuse me. He utilized cash on hand and $200,000, and the $600,000 was to go back and pay it. So in 28, on the 28th, we did not unnecessarily borrow that money. We borrowed it on the best information available at that point in time.
And the reason you, the best information was inaccurate was because you did not have a year-end report for 2016, which is the control issue that I'm talking about.
And I don't disagree.
If that, if that report had been there, you would have known the surplus, you would have known the cash was available, and the bond would not have been, which is exactly what I just said. Unnecessarily bonded. I'm not saying you, you--
Understood.
--this council made a mistake. I'm saying you did not have the information you needed to make the proper decision.
That's better. Thank you.
These bonds were actually sold 14 weeks after the settlement payment. The council still did not get that financial report in that timeframe. If they had gotten the report, they could have canceled the sale of those bonds in that timeframe. That's a control issue. Then the extra $6,000 from the bond sold was not used for what the bond ordinance allocated it for. If it was, it would have gone back into the general fund where the money had been taken from, not into this year's budget. Very different things. Replacing the money from where it was taken, putting it in this year's budget. The money from the bonds was neither part of the approved fiscal budget nor to be used for the budget based on the ordinance, the bond ordinance. Yet the $600,000 was transferred to revenue at the very end of the fiscal year without the town council direction, or as far as I can tell, even prior knowledge. Finally, the website copy of the 2017 audit, which covers these transactions, was changed without any indication it had been changed or what those changes were. That's a financial control issue. The fiduciary responsibility rests with you, the town council, not the auditor or the administration. The above facts illustrate substantial issues resulting from financial, from a lack of financial reports or controls. Even though the audit did not highlight this, the council needs to take corrective action and ensure the complete future financial reporting is available so the council has full knowledge of the financial position of the town and can make informed decisions. Otherwise, taxpayer money will continue to be wasted. I believe an audit committee is the best way to address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I will repeat that those corrections haven't been, I think you've seen them since Mr. Menke has come on board.
I understand that people believe that. I think it's a logical thing to do, since the auditor hasn't gone through them, to have that looked at, because it was a problem. They have not been inspected by any auditor since they've been put in place. I think it would be a good thing to have somebody look at the internal controls available so that this doesn't happen again.
In terms of making sure we get our monthly financial reports?
Not just monthly financial reports, but to make sure that if $600,000 is going to be moved from one spot to another, the council is at least made aware of it.
And that has been corrected as well.
Again, we say that, but this happened within six months now.
Any other questions?
I've got one more question, Mr. President. Just to get off this $600,000. We have the school committee chair here. I apologized last year for thinking that the 1213 warrants were school money. Mr. Rayner sent me an email telling me that the 1112 warrant was authorized by this council in 2013 at $562,000. $500,000 for the road, and I believe $62,000.
I think the total was $750.
Again, from the email that Mr. Rayner sent me, he was very open in sending me this information. This warrant item is now up to minus 1.148569. It's the second time it's ended up on the audit report as a delinquent fund. And I'd like accountability from the town, from the town manager to, have accountability to the council, to enlighten us what this money, how this money got to 1.148569, which is an audit number on page 52 and 53, and how it grew from the 562 that I believe that the, was the authorization by the council. I understand last year, in the middle of the budget cycle, I asked why this wasn't included in a debt service. I think I've figured it out. It's never been bonded. It's being treated as a slush fund.
I do not believe it's been treated as a slush fund.
Well, there's transfers in and transfers out yearly, year after year. I'd like a full accounting over the 562, what projects it funded. And that's what's, in an audit report from the town council, we have 12 audit, 12 projects. We don't know if they're completed on or off budget. We have, we have multiple projects in the town. Is that part of a financial audit? That the monies that were used against the given year, if they came in, if there's an over expenditure within a project and whether the project was completed?
So when we look at the capital projects, we look at capital projects as a whole, and we look at them from a materiality point of view. They're 100% correct. There appears to be a couple of warrants, that being the biggest one, where you have not bonded for. In terms of what projects that originally authorized--
That's not you, that's--
That's correct. That would be internally--
Absolutely.
Those projects that were originally authorized by this council as part of the warrant, and all you've expended on those really is an internal function as opposed to an external audit.
Again, those are the controls that I believe are missing. Because I think we actually bonded, there's an email, there's a memo. I asked Mr. Rayner for any and all information. He gave me the minutes from the meeting. It was approved on the meeting of August 28, 2013, I think it was, from the memo, at 562. So I'd like a full accounting, and that's a motion.
Sure. I'm looking at the 2013, 20--
1213?
Budget.
Correct.
The principal was $770,000, plus $500,000 for road payment. Interest estimated at 5%. Recreation bond for $455,000. It was put into the budget that you voted on in 2012 and 13. Now, why it wasn't--
Why it never got bonded?
I think it did get bonded. But I don't think the money--
We went through this exercise--
Understood.
--at the budgets, at the budget meeting, I had to apologize to the school department because warrants were always warrants. It was an easy target. I apologized three times. I'll apologize again tonight. It's $562,000. There's another growth I just learned onto the side that I don't think is part of the original minutes from that meeting. We need a full accounting on this. It's the second time the accountant has brought this up, and $1.1 million is finally getting into real money.
Okay.
I made a motion, I didn't get a second.
Second.
Mr. Rayner, Mr. Menke, you understand the motion? Figure out where the money came from. I would like to add to the motion and develop a plan to take care of the deficit.
Well, we just, we've got to bond it, which it was already bonded at a lower amount.
I don't think we need to bond it. I think we can use money from surplus to pay it down over time.
I'd like more background on this motion before voting on it. I mean, could we--
It's just he wants an accounting of--
Just want an accounting on the warrants.
What it was, what it was used, what it was originally purposed for, what it was bonded for, and what it got paid.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I'm unfamiliar with the issue that Mr. Kessin is raising until just this moment. And essentially, it sounds like he's accusing something--
I'm not accusing anybody, Mr. President.
You are saying, well, that you use the phrase slush fund.
Mr. President, will you stop this?
It was--
When I hear the word slush fund.
It was done in a previous administration. Whatever happened, because it was in 1213, 14, let's, we can, we can all admit that it was between 2012 and 2014, something didn't happen. We're stuck with it now. We're going to fix it. Mr. Kessin's request is to have a full accounting of it, so then we can figure out a way to fix it. That's all.
Because I think--
Slush fund is a bad word to use, but--
Tonight it is. I just want to know from the 562 that it was originally budgeted at, we're at 1.1 million, what projects were used on it, what years? And either let's go bond it because it was never bonded, which I'm not sure I'd vote for that one. But we need a full account. This is the second year the auditor's brought it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's already in here anyway.
And I didn't vote for the budget during the budget cycle because it wasn't, didn't have a debt service against it.
It's already on page 66. Management will derive an administrative plan to fund the deficits noted above.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll go with your opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Seven to zero? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Kyle or Mrs.? I'm going to mess it up this time, I guarantee you.
I've got one question for the auditor.
Sure.
And I'll have somebody else.
You can use Mary.
Mary? Thank you.
If we found the money in the next year's budget to senior a vendor right now, and it would be easy to task you again.
She's a vendor next year, too, right? It's a three-year contract?
So she's a, but we'd have to add funding. Is it possible for you to do an overview of the charter and state laws as it applies to our budget, so we have the checks and know the checks on these internal controls?
We are certainly capable of doing that. That's generally something that your town council does and writes--
Well, it's in writing right now, but it's not, it's not in writing, and I brought this up during executive session, that we have, we don't have a procedure that we can point to during a review cycle, whether or not we're following that. All of those laws listed by somebody else, rather than thinking, you know, we have somebody over here in the room making up special rules.
We certainly can review your ordinance together with your solicitor, the town solicitor, to determine those that are financial in nature, so those that relate to budgeting, which I believe is what you're saying, and compare those, because some of them may be contrary to Rhode Island general law. Compare those to Rhode Island general law and report to you as to best practices. But your ordinance, with the exception of the transaction we have thought over and over and over again tonight, is in compliance with Rhode Island general law and your ordinance. So I don't want to take your money from you unnecessarily.
Okay. That's good.
I'm being fair with you.
No, I get that.
You shouldn't pay us to look at something that has to comply with the law in the first place. Now, I don't know what your records look like back in 2012 and 13, and as I've heard this evening, you've had some turnover. Your finance department may need some assistance in looking at some old audits and some old work with related, as it relates to this warrant that it appears that you've overspent and continue to overspend, because you had another $200,000.
We haven't sealed it yet. We had 232, we had 232 this year.
Right. So certainly, somebody should put that reporting together, if, you know, the finance department puts that together and you'd like us to look at it to make sure that it looks reasonable before it's presented to you, we can certainly do that.
No, I think they're going to do a good job. I was just worried about the checks and balances as we go through these. That's all.
But I think checks and balances are something more that we have to do internally as a council, not necessarily what they're doing in terms of the charter. And I think that's already been taken care of.
All right. I'm going to move on to the next.
And we, as a council, need to make sure that we're getting those monthly reports.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
This was an entertaining audit report. Here's hoping next year isn't quite as entertaining.
Exactly. Let's hope next year is a lot--
This year you earned your money. Next year you maybe you get, you know, a little less.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to old business number five, which is now new business number 2A, which is discussion and approval of 2018 through 21, 2021 town administrator contract.
Mr. President, before we do, do we have to make a motion to move this--
Receive, place, and file?
--and replace and place on file?
Sure. Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven to zero. That was a motion to receive the audit report and place it on file.
Okay.
Okay. Now, under new business, old business five slash 2A, new business 2A. The contract as placed on the website has been amended, well, the motion was-- The contract as placed on the website has been amended, well, the motion was to amend it. Well, we did make a motion to amend it, did we?
I invoked to amend the contract to take out the 65. And otherwise, accept the contract.
Second.
Further discussion that we've had already? If anybody wants to add to anything? Lisa?
Um, where do I start here? I'll keep it brief. I will not be approving this contract as written tonight. I don't like the comparison between the town administrator and the top five paid school people here. I think there's a lot more experience on the school side, and while Mr. Rayner has got two and a half years under his belt, I think as a town administrator, he's still on a learning curve on the experience side. So I think the contract is overly generous, and for that reason, you know, I think that the taxpayer dollars are not spent as conservatively as I would have liked to have. So I will not be voting for this contract tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Kesson?
Mr. President, thank you. During executive session, we had a discussion about the contract. There were no motions. What I'm not happy with the contract, and I won't be voting for the contract, is I think it's time to stabilize the town, have a bullet plated contract after talking with the human resource director. She doesn't think it takes long to put one of those together, it might not be much different than this contract. But I won't be voting for it, because I think we need to start standardizing our contracts rather than individuals.
Ms. Pedro, anything?
Not really, I just, I agree with my colleagues. It's just stated over and over, you know, the differences in the contract were because, because we wanna make it the same as the superintendent, because of the superintendent, because of the superintendent. I just don't like, I don't like the comparison, and I, we just talked about it, it's, it's not a reason. It's, I don't like, I can't really go into it too much, because we're in negotiations with other departments, and I'll just leave it.
Okay. Anyway, Ms. Ojafusa?
I would just say that trying to standardize a very unique position like town administrator does not make sense to me. I also believe that Mr. Rayner has been doing an unbelievably good job with almost a skeletal staff. He is underpaid in comparison to other town administrators in comparable towns. I believe that for the sake of keeping Portsmouth running well, that we really should approve this contract.
Mr. Rayner? Ms. Edgar?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to also follow up. I mean, in our, in our discussions, I mean, this contract that's before us is very similar to the, to Mr. Rayner's current agreement. It is a very, you know, it's a very well-structured agreement. There's some minor modifications to it. My, my questions really revolve around the framework of the agreement, and if it was consistent with similar senior management positions in the town. And I was told that it was very similar to other senior management positions in the town. My position is Mr. Rayner is our town administrator, and, you know, he should be, he should have a contract that's, you know, commensurate with his position in the town, and what other senior management personnel are the same benefits, the same types of benefit structure. I think this is a framework for future agreements for the town administrator. So he gets the benefit of being the first one to, you know, have this thing, you know, formed around the position, but I'm in support of it, and I would vote, you know, to approve.
Sorry? Anything?
I just think that Rich has come on, he inherited some very difficult financial circumstances, things in the budget that weren't properly recorded or accounted. He's done a wonderful job, I think, straightening these things out. He's been very steadfast in doing his job. He is underpaid compared to a number of other town administrators. I think if you want quality help, you pay for it. And I would vote for this contract.
I'm in favor of voting for the contract. I think Mr. Rayner has done a good job. Yes, there have been growing pains, we discussed them all here tonight. I think that with the team he has put together, between the upper management that he has, changes will be brought forward, we'll have a tighter ship, and we'll be able to move forward, coming in under budget, and making sure our expenses are paid. And I know we have, we have a good plan going forward for our capital, we have a good plan going forward for our HR. I don't disagree with Mr. Kesson, that we should have a, lack of a better term, a boilerplate for all of our upper management positions, whether it be fire chief, DPW, town clerk, so that everybody's on the same playing field. I am of the belief that all of our staff should have the same benefit package, but we haven't gotten to that yet. We're trying to change that. So any town employee who signs up gets the same benefits across the board. We're getting there, so. Any other questions or comments? All those are in favor of a three-year contract for Mr. Rayner with the clause that is stated on the, last bullet point on the bottom there, with removal of or the increase of the consumer price index, whichever is greater, will be removed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to three. On to...
Who was the, who made the motion?
Mr. Rayner.
Right. Thank you.
New business number three, Tank Farm Advisory. Who is it? Are you giving us?
Gary is.
Gary is.
Where's Gary? Is he still home?
You... This is, in fact, one of the oldest pieces of business that we have.
Yeah, it is.
Even I was on the Tank Farm Committee at one point.
Yeah, so I'm not, so, new business three, I don't know, whatever. I can, let me, I can be very, very quick here. We are here to, I can be quick, or I, you know, I can talk to, I can talk for quite a while. Discussion, and we're here for discussion and action by the council to approve Tank Farm Advisory Committee's recommended course of action as articulated in the attached text, and to approve the drafting of a letter based on those recommendations to the BRAC office informing the Navy of the town's intentions. I can just read, the basis of that letter will be paragraph three of the, of what you have for backup here, and I can read that, and we can be done. Or I can talk to you about how the Tank Farm Advisory Committee came to this, came to this decision. You choose.
Let's start with just reading.
After careful, the letter will be composed of this core language here. "After careful consideration of all the property transfer options available to the town as the DOD-recognized LRA, Local Redevelopment Agency. It is our belief," this, when I say it is our belief, it is the Tank Farm Advisory Committee's and mine, "that the surest way to accomplish Portsmouth redevelopment goals for the tank farms, which are to get the property onto the tax rolls as quickly as possible, and to develop the property so that it supports the marine industry down in Melville. And I would also add that so that it enhances the naval station Newport by planning land uses along the west side that are compatible with the base's mission." That's one that I've been shopping around for a while, but, let's see, "is to decline to undertake the most viable option for the town, an economic development conveyance, and instead elect to work with the Navy to facilitate a public sale with the possible early transfer of the property. With this course of action, the town does not wish to give up our designation as the LRA," and there's some very specific reasons why we don't wanna do that, "and wishes to reserve the right to pursue an EDC, an economic development conveyance, should the public sale option be unsuccessful. To understand, we understand the town retains zoning control once the private, once the property is privately held, and intend to work closely with the Navy to ensure potential buyers are fully aware of not only our goals for the redevelopment of the property, but the municipal regulations under which they may do so. With regard to the acquisition of Stringham Road and a portion of Defense Access Highway Burma Road, under current circumstances, the town does not wish to acquire these roadways." Now, this, this language, I have shopped this to Greg Preston. Greg Preston is the BRAC officer who would sit across the table from us to transfer the property. His signature is on dozens and dozens of economic development conveyances all over the country. I've shopped this language to him, and he believes that it fits his purposes with the Navy, and it basically triggers him to go ahead and begin to prepare a offering, a public offering of this property for public sale, with early transfer of the property if possible. So he likes the language, we've all vetted it, we like it, we think that this is precisely the way the town should go forward.
So this takes the town out of that intermediary step of transferring to the town, to somebody else?
We're done.
Directly to Bob the Builder.
And it keeps us, it keeps us in the loop as far as, what happens between now and eight or nine months from now, is that Greg Preston and I will start going to EPA and to DEM and to all the stakeholders and parties to try and put together answers to all these questions, find out what DEM and EPA want to see in the way of a private cleanup of the property in order for him to, 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 to work towards a early transfer of the property. He believes, and as I do, that if we, we will do two things. One, our zoning will be right in that offering that goes out to potential buyers, so they will know who to come to talk to about what our goals and what our wishes and what the regulations are for, for our development of the property. And secondly...
Brain fart. It'll get transferred to FASIS?
It'll get transferred to FASIS, and it will attract the most appropriate, it'll, it'll attract the big guys, because there isn't going to be, there isn't going to be a small player that's gonna step in and try and clean up the property. And with regard to the zoning, what he has seen in the past, and why he wants us to be so closely involved, is what he has seen in the past is buyers will come along thinking that they can steamroll the town as far as zoning is concerned, and, you know, the deals blow up, and it's all quite a mess. And so, given the limitations and the goals that we have for the, that we've established for ourselves for the tank farms, I think the Tank Farm Advisory Committee and I both make this advice to you, that we go ahead and send this letter.
Okay. Dr. Rayner?
None of these arrangements does the town incur any liability for the clean-up.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Only, only in the EDC, right? Only if we do an EDC?
We're not going to do an EDC. We're stepping...
But we reserve, but we reserve that right to do that, right?
At, if the public sale does not go through, we reserve the right to take a second look and do that if we want to.
Mr. Chair, I move that we follow the recommendation offered by Mr. Crosby and the Tank Farm Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, Mr. Leece?
I just have one more question. Gary, does it take the burden of the cleanup off the Navy by going this route, or they still have a general?
No, they, they will still, and let, given, left to their own devices, they will clean up the property on their own. They have their best estimates for creating what's called a FOAST, a finding of suitability of transfer. For Tank Farm 1 is 2023, and for Tank Farm 2 is 2024. So they will, they will continue to clean it up. And the idea with, with us advancing in partnership with the Navy for a public sale is with, with the, with the requirement, or the possibility of an early transfer, that the Navy will sell the property to a developer who will take over that cleanup. Now, ultimately, when they're done with that cleanup, and, and what that does also is it takes, if we were, if we were to go with an EDC, our sort of golden goose solution to all of this was, we get the property from the Navy, from an EDC, we've already got a buyer lined up who's gonna buy the property, we take a cut, and the, the buyer proceeds to clean up the property, and then go on his way developing it. Well, if, while, while we're under the, while that buyer from us, buying it from us, is doing the cleanup, if something goes wrong with that cleanup, they're working for us at this point in time, and if something goes wrong with that cleanup, then we would be, we would have trouble with that. So what this does, and then ultimately, once, and everything goes, if everything goes right, in both cases, in a public sale, or in a case of an EDC through us, that once the cleanup is finished, then the Navy steps back in, and they have perpetual liability, no matter who owns it and who's developed it, they have perpetual liability for whatever is found after the fact, after the cleanup is finished. If there's munition, we run across munitions, or, you know, dig a hole and bury it, PCB pits or something like that, that haven't been found, the Navy retains that. So even in an EDC, if, well, to answer your question, we're out of the liability chain by giving the, by going into partnership with the Navy to facilitate a public sale.
Ms. Pedro, you have a question? Thought you had your hand up a little while ago.
I did, but, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kesson?
The LRA is us.
Yes.
Council.
Yeah.
Why we don't wanna give up rights to this, I don't wanna give them an encouragement that this is not a, not a boat down the road.
Correct. The reason why we, why we wanna retain rights as an LRA is that one of the specific questions that I asked Greg Preston is if we elect to step back and say, put a for sale sign on it, we're done, that, does that open the door for the state, for example, to come in and try and take it over, or, or even another federal agency to come back in and take it over? And his answer was no, that if we retain the, our obligations as an LRA, that DOD would basically have to, quote, "unrecognize" us as the LRA. And they have never done that, they think that that is a, that is a drastic step. And one of the things that he said to me, one of the things he said specifically in the language in the letter, is you want to keep your, your, your status as the LRA.
Any other questions, anyway? Motion is to approve, as presented, the recommendation from the planning committee? And you guys are gonna stick on as a planning committee?
We're just wanting to point out that...
I know. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next up, we have correspondence. We have a letter from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, letting us know where they're gonna be sticking up poles. A letter from the Portsmouth regarding safety issues at the Melville Basin business community, and a request to support a resolution for Newport City Council regarding increases in the electric and gas rates from National Grid. Anybody wanna pull any of those things forward? I can comment roughly on item number two, that we do have our federal delegation looking into this. And I had a conversation with our postmaster, who apparently thinks there's not kids and dogs running all over the streets in Portsmouth, and it only happens in the Melville Bend and Boe Basin. And we have sidewalks everywhere else, too.
Motion received and placed on file.
No second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next meeting is February 12th at 7:00 PM, normal business, and on February 26th, we'll have at 7:00 PM, we will... Normal business, and on February 26, we'll have, at 7:00 PM, we will have our public hearing for the plastic bag ordinance discussion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Good night, everyone.